Morning. I will, I will just say, uh, good morning to all and welcome to day two of the Boulder City Council Retreat for 2022. We made some great progress last night, excited to get to work this morning, finish out our retreat priority list. So Heather, over to you for the duration of the meeting.
Thanks, Erin. Good morning, council. Brenda, if you would let me share my screen, I just wanted to do a quick run through of the agenda plan. And then, thank you. We will just do this real quick. Alright, so where, I don't even know what I just did. That was the wrong thing. Hold on. See, we only had half this cup of coffee is what's happening here. Alright, this time for sure. Okay, so here we are at eight o'clock on a Saturday morning. We are going to pick up where we left off yesterday. Our top item there, transit bikes and BMT, we tackled last night. Which means we're going to start with Bob this morning on occupancy and we have some other planning items. We have elections and all the other things. The items that I just on the fly put in italics are the ones for which we had some teams um, doing some preliminary work prior to our conversation to today. And the other ones are things for which we do not have um, homework. But again, uh, I am hoping that those of you who had ideas in those camera, in those categories have given some thought um, to some more refined concise uh, actions or asks with those clear endpoints. So we'll do that. Hopefully get through those by around 10 o'clock, take a break and then we want to come back and I have a list of what I think I heard was items that were underway and if um, council members and staff, you can affirm that that's the right list. That's great. And if not, we will discuss. And then we'll start doing that prioritization exercise as I alluded to last night. I don't know what that's going to look like until I see how the rest of our conversation goes, but I am building the tool. Um, as we go along, so um, I think it's all going to work out swimmingly. Um, we do anticipate after you, you all do a prioritization exercise, we'll probably want to visit about that for a fair amount of time. Um, and then once we get to an endpoint, we'll review what we think it is. So we're all clear on how we're leaving the day and get you out of here by noonie, noon, noon. So that be the plan and um, given that that's a whole, whole lot of good stuff, I'm inclined just to jump right into Bob and tell us what your um, homework produced in, on the topic of occupancy, if you would.
Before I do, I thought we might have a little historical context. I was uh, cleaning my office the other day and of course, if you've ever cleaned your office, you know, it's like an archaeological dig, be more current stuff, top, and then you further down you go with this, gets older and older. And I eventually reached 2016. Um, and I came across the 2016 work plan, Erin, this will be familiar to you. This is the very first retreat that you and I had back in 2016. I just want to read some things from that list. Uh, some are familiar and some are not. Um, a ban shell update. Uh, statistics around the camping ban, um, mobile food truck ordinance, uh, council was then planning a trip to Portland, Oregon. Um, a water main break ordinance, uh, mediation efforts, I think you led these uh, uh, Heather, uh, relating the Nobles Sister City application, uh, middle income housing strategy, that sounds familiar. Uh, beer pong tables on the hill, Indigenous Peoples' Day Prairie Dog relocation, civic center uh, reconstruction, public participation working group, still working on that. Uh, a subcommittee regarding climate action, a head tax, a resolution regarding the Standing Rock Indian Reservation and whether we should be uh, declaring Boulder as a sanctuary city. Just wanted to provide a little context around that. Some things are things that are perennial issues and some, um, I think we've left um, long behind. I want to get into occupancy and we really have two topics to talk about here. Um, one relating to um, providing some additional regulatory framework uh, to um, protect tenants. We have more than half the people living in Boulder who are tenants and um, for that, before we get into the occup, the occupancy law itself, we thought we'd turn it over to Nicole, who, who advocated for this idea. And I think she could elaborate better than that I could, um, what um, what the thinking is around this and what actions we might take. So Nicole, take it away.
Sure. Thanks, Bob. I wasn't expecting to go first. I haven't quite filled up on my coffee enough yet. Do the best I can. Um, okay, so uh, this, this priority kind of when, when I mentioned it was really just trying to recognize and acknowledge the fact that most of us on council are homeowners. Um, but we now have a majority of our city who are renting um, properties in the city and, and you know, and also recognizing that not everybody wants to be a homeowner. Um, you know, I think there, there are a lot of folks who do, but um, there's also some who do not, you know, and, and are um, kind of happy, happy to rent, given um, it's, it's an affordable choice for them. Um, so you know, I'm thinking around, what can we do, right? Recognizing this, um, recognizing that uh, there, there's some local state and national work that's advocating more for renter protections. Um, in really trying to make renting as um, as feasible and safe as possible for those in our community who choose to do that uh, or who don't have a choice, uh, because they can't afford the homes. Um, so there is that, that in mind. Then the second part of that is that, you know, we are hearing from a lot of members in our community that they're frustrated with some of the behaviors of a subset of um, those who are renting and maybe aren't quite um, mature enough to be living on their own just yet. Um, which does not at all, all of our renters. And I really just want to keep emphasizing that we're talking about a small group here. Um, so it just kind of seems like a good time for us to really consider um, some of these renter landlord kinds of issues um, and, and the impacts that they are um, having on the community. So um, you know, given that most of us are not uh, renters, um, what seems like the best approach here is to put together a working group uh, made up of a staff representative from the city. Um, renters, property owners, uh, legal experts, maybe some folks from C U's off campus housing office. Um, who could really just spend a little bit of time together for 12 months or so figuring out um, some uh, as an ordinance or a set of ordinances that are offering some renter protection. So um, this is something where actually Nurya, our wonderful city manager has a lot of expertise um, and thinking about tenant rights and things like that. Um, so I don't know if it's something, you know, that, that might live within the city manager's office as um, you know, kind of that, that working group um, that would be coming together. Uh, but really, you know, this, this is something that I don't, I don't think it needs to happen tomorrow. Um, but I think at some point within the next two years, we really do need to um, spend some time getting input from renters specifically um, in this group and thinking about how we can do this. I know some of the landlord accountability issues I think are coming up in the Hill Working Group and other areas, so it may not be um, quite as necessary to, to kind of direct additional efforts there. I think we could just build off of the efforts that are um, already in place and support them. Um, but let's see, I, I mean, I think, you know, I, I have been a homeowner for over 12 years now, so I don't have the right sense of what exactly these things are that we should be pushing for. Um, just knowing that there are a lot of renters in our community who, who are, are really um, struggling and, and what can we do uh, to um, to make sure that they have a voice and that we're, we're developing policies that um, are things that they need to make their lives better. I'm going to pause here and ask for questions on a somewhat nonspecific idea, other than bringing people together to give us ideas.
Looks like you got one, Erin.
Thanks for that, Nicole. Appreciate the, that's a great idea. Um, it's not a question for you actually, but Nurya, I was going to turn to you because I know you have some ideas about how to help maybe with some landlords who are not taking care of their tenants in the way that they should. And I just wonder if you have any thoughts on how some of your ideas in that area might interact with this idea of Nicole's?
Sure. And I kinda, and I appreciate that, Erin, and good morning, everybody. I, I had kind of um, put a note at some point that this notion of like tenants' right and expanding um, these protections sort of could, is going, probably going to be informed by the work that staff is doing on the hill as we look at Newson at the basement. And you know, as many of you know that um, I started in that in Minneapolis and frankly, Minneapolis took that even further. Uh, as I moved off of the department uh, into really going into a lot of tenants uh, advocacy and tenant rights and tenant protections work. So really proud of having worked in that arena as well. Um, but it's both, right? It is uh, recognizing that to Nicole's point, not everybody wants to be a homeowner and there's a lot of renters in our community. Not every renter is um, disturbing the peace or um, or limiting folks enjoyment of their home. Not every landlord is not um, doing what they can to do the right thing. So it's a series of, I think, uh, carrots and sticks. We have been talking with Barha about um, landlord education um, or property manager education to make sure that people know the, what their responsibilities are. On the flip side, I know in Minneapolis, we did a lot of work to make sure that tenants knew where to go to for assistance because the power dynamic is slightly different, right? When you're a renter than when you're a landlord. And so there's a series of things that we're going to be doing uh, as part of the Hill revitalization work. And I think that group in particular is going to really help us shed light onto what we can do in other parts of the city as well. And the notions of what we can do to also protect tenants will come uh, as part of that. We've been thinking a little bit of that with our community in San Lassaro, who has also been um, working with some uh, folks and how do they deal with property manage issues um, in ways that really perhaps impact their ability to raise their voices for fear of retaliation. And we're uh, working through some of those issues as well. So I see them as hand in hand. And really part of the work that we're doing with both the San Lassaro community and with the Hill, and I think that they will come out together um, in sort of a package deal because you can't do one without the other. Thanks, Nurya. Rachel?
Uh, good morning, everyone. Thanks for that idea, Nicole and Bob passing the baton over to Nicole. Um, so Nurya, I was sort of thinking similarly because I'm involved in both of those Hill and San Lassaro efforts. Um, that a lot of this, I think, is being done. And also wanted to check in on when we passed uh, no eviction without representation, there were some sort of a tenant uh, renters, were some kind of group came together around that and just wanted to know how they, how they fit into this.
I'll, I'll share with you that I actually don't know because I wasn't around for that. Um, but I can certainly check back and sort of figure it out. I see Kurt popping up, so he may know. And I'll say that Kurt's folks in mediation have been super helpful as well in trying to work through some of those um, issues. And we, I'd expect that we continue to tap that group for um, their expertise and knowledge for what they're seeing in community as well. Kurt?
Uh, good morning, council. Kurt Fernhaver again, uh, Director of Housing Human Services. Um, so yeah, that, that's um, that committee um, was set up and um, they meet on a regular basis. Of course, it's, it's a committee of all renters. And um, they provide um, inputs on sort of the policy and approaches to the implementation um, of EPRESS. And um, I, I think that um, that approach has been very helpful um, in um, designing the um, the EPRESS program. And um, uh, I'll also say that there, there's, there's a fair amount of um, work in our mediation group um, that deals with tenant landlord issues. And um, that's been established for many years now in the community. And um, you know, possibly there could be um, more efforts about ensuring that the public is more aware of that, that resource as well.
Okay, thanks. And, and one other question probably for Nurya. Uh, assuming, uh, you know, the Hill work group's been in place for years, the whole time I've been on council and really sort of escalated after the riots last year. And I would hope that, that we come to fruition with whatever uh, steps we're going to take in the very near future. Is this something that we could come back to after that? And hopefully we make progress on San Lassaro and um, put, put Nicole's idea like in the parking lot that we develop at retreats and come back and see like between the renters that are already meeting as a group, you know, if they can take on anything else, I don't know. And then whatever comes out as these two, like, does that, that gets where we need to go?
Um, well, it's kind of a, a, a yes and, right? I, I certainly think some of it could, depending on how big some of our solutions are, but frankly, some of it is going to come as part of that group as well, right? We're already talking about sort of thinking and, and again, uh, you know, I, I want to make sure that we provide that it's not an unfunded mandate, particularly for planning, but figuring out how to add resources to them in the future to really build out a more robust code compliance program. Um, and again, I, I, I'm a little skewed and biased because it's, it was in my uh, wheelhouse as we move forward. Um, but to really think about what does that look like as we're also currently addressing some of the issues with the Hill revitalization group. So some of that will actually come into play already. Because we think that like landlord education is something um, that is important for the work that we're doing in the Hill revitalization group and that will impact sort of the comprehensive package on um, how to protect tenants and um, tenants' rights as we move forward as well. So there's going to be some crossover in those as we move on. And there'll be some things that as we think about in the Hill group of solutions to also put in that parking lot of, oh, this is that next phase of doing some uh, more robust planning and partnership with folks. And I do know that on our work plan this year, we plan to bring um, some ordinance changes. We hope that uh, CAO is already uh, involved in and working on. Um, I believe it's around Q3. Uh, but again, those conversations, it is hard to have just a conversation just on property management without also having it on the tenant side. So they will be, I think, going in tandem, but perhaps we'll dive into tenants' rights more robustly. Um, once we finish out some, or bring forward to you some initial thoughts on the Hill revitalization work that we're doing, if that makes sense. Erin?
Yeah, Rachel, thanks for asking that question about the, the no eviction without representation group because the, that committee that's been stood up there is already a, a committee of all renters who are working on eviction prevention. So I, I wonder if we might tap their uh, engagement and expertise for some of the consultations, Nicole, that, that you're talking about doing. Um, since that's a great group that's already stood up. So I think that idea could have some real promise.
Mm-hmm. Nicole, what do you think about that idea?
Yeah, no, I, I think that it addresses um, some of my concerns. I think, you know, as Rachel was saying last night, um, that in, if we were to convene a, a group of homelessness services providers and others, like it would be nice for council to kind of see the makeup of that group. Um, this might be a place too where, you know, for these, I think there were three different groups that, that were mentioned, you know, is it possible for us to see kind of the makeup for that groups? I think that just um, starts to address some of the concerns of, you know, who's represented, who's having a voice at the table and um, and being there. So I'm just wondering if that that may get at that, that issue. But I just want, also want to say thank you for um, all the work that's going on. I know this is a, an issue that um, everyone is concerned about.
Nurya, um, what's your recommendation here? Is this something that you think is um, doesn't need to be prioritized because it can be added to with the sort of some of the conversations of an existing group? And you could just follow up with council on that later, or shall I leave it here on the list? What's your, what's your gut? You know, I, I, obviously I defer to council on what they want to prioritize, but I will say that to the dreaded tuck-in conversation, that this is something that will be tucked into the work that's already going on. And then know that it is also on our mind, um, moving forward, how do we add additional protections um, going there? So I don't personally think that it needs to be elevated to that, given how many uh, priorities you all have in mind. Uh, and just would say, know that we're being thoughtful about it and that it's part of our conversation as we move forward. Okay. Nicole, are you comfortable with what Nurya said and I should take it off the list, or you want to leave it here just in case council wants to elevate it?
Yeah, no, I'm comfortable with it. I think, you know, we've got a lot of other things um, going on. Um, this, you know, it will fold into some of the work. Um, and I think the only thing that I would ask of us as council, again, council ask for every, every section um, is that we are really conscious as we move throughout our decisions of the fact that um, on this issue of renter um, protections, we, we are very um, we are representing an underrepresented group with most of us being homeowners. So I just ask that we're conscious of that um, as we make decisions.
Thanks, Nicole. Bob, did Nicole covered, or do you have other things on occupancy?
No, that was great. Uh, thanks for that great discussion, Nicole. Thanks so much for presenting that. Um, the other thing, the one other thing that we want to present occupancy relates to occupancy limits. Um, you all know, of course, that we had a ballot measure last year brought forward by a, a, a group of residents. I do want to do a shout out to um, to Chelsea Costellano and Eric Bud for leading a team of dozens, I think, of residents who advocated for ballot measure 300 and a change in our occupancy law. That ballot measure didn't quite pass. I think it garnered 48% of the vote. But what we heard from um, many people following that vote, including people that said that they voted against it was, while I didn't like that particular ballot measure, the way it was structured, I do think we need to address occupancy. And we've heard that from council members. We heard that from members of the community, both pro and con and ballot measure 300. And so uh, several council members elevated this as something that could possibly be on our work plan. You know, what, what do we do on occupancy? And I want to be very, very clear. I don't think that anyone is proposing a do-over on the particular ballot measure that was voted down, but I think there's a recognition that there may be something we can do around occupancy that's a little different than that ballot measure. And I want to talk about those potential differences. Um, we heard a lot during the campaign, both on both sides of, of that ballot, particular ballot measure last fall about um, whether, and I'm going to mention four things, whether um, the measuring uh, occupancy by the number of bedrooms is the proper measure. Different cities do different things. Um, the ballot measure proposed number of bedrooms plus one. Um, but, but some folks uh, raised as an issue, the possibility that landlords could get cute about that. They could turn a dining room or a living room into a bedroom. Or they could simply add in addition to a house um, and turn a three or four bedroom house into a theoretically a six or seven bedroom house. And there was concern that um, that, that would cause the carrying capacity of a neighborhood to be exceeded, or that landlords would do things that were un, unhealthy or unsafe for their tenants. Um, and so one of the things I think if we take this up as a, as a item is the question, should bedrooms be even the measure of occupancy? You know, whether it's bedrooms plus one or bedrooms plus two or bedrooms plus zero. It is bedrooms even the right measure? Should we simply have a fixed number, which we do right now. Right now, it's, it's either three or four people per unrelated people per house or per dwelling unit. Um, and uh, uh, that's an arbitrary number, of course. And, and, and some cities say five, some cities say six, some cities say nothing. Uh, and so the question is, is should we measure that by bedrooms? Should we measure by square feet, which would be another way to go? Or should we just come up with a flat number? Um, so that would be one um, thing. We're not, we're obviously not going to decide that now, but one thing that, that an initiative could, could evaluate. The second thing is the definition of family. We heard a lot during the campaign that the way our, our, um, our law is structured and perhaps even enforced, it's discriminatory to families that are people, groups of people that are, that, that live together, non-traditionally. Uh, what's the definition of a family? Is it a committed relationship? Is this a particular uh, law, the way it's written, anti-gay? Um, and, and are there ways that we can uh, reformulate the law? If, if we even use family as a benchmark? What, what is the definition of family? So that's item number two. Item number three that came up a lot in the campaign is, well, gosh, um, that sounds like a really swell idea to raise occupancy and, and, and tap into those unused bedrooms. But certain neighborhoods will undoubtedly be affected more than others. And of course, we're talking about neighborhoods around the university where we have often a lot of students who are living uh, off campus and um, often of course want to live relatively close to where they go to school. And so neighborhoods on the hill and Aurora and Goss Grove and Martin Akers might be more heavily impacted by a change in occupancy law than neighborhoods that are either extreme north or extreme south. And so the question, again, we're not going to answer today is should there be a, a citywide law or should there be a city, the right law that has some exceptions for those neighborhoods that are close to the university? And then finally, uh, a number of people it, uh, during that campaign last year identified affordability as an issue. If, if we simply say, alright, we're going to allow more people to live in a house, does that guarantee affordability? Is the, the laws of supply and demand say, well, jeez, if there's more bedrooms available in, in Boulder, Colorado, the prices will come down. Others felt, well, no, they, actually, there's probably a relatively inelastic uh, economy around uh, housing. And uh, the only people that will come out ahead on that will be landlords because landlords will simply have more people to charge the same uh, per bedroom rent to. And so the question is, if we do change occupancy, we allow uh, some landlords to rent more of their bedrooms out, should there be a um, an agreement between uh, the landlord and the city whereby those incremental bedrooms um, are charged at below market rate? So we can ass- assure not only a, a, access to those bedrooms, but affordability. Uh, some of you might remember that when we developed the liberalized ADU law about three or four years ago, we, we provided a provision. There was, there's two types of ADUs and one of them, which is more generous to the property owner uh, requires the property owner to um, charge below market rents. And so there are maybe some, some models we could, we could adopt from that. So those are at least four things. And I'm sure there will be other things that we would want to talk about. I think the ask is to, to staff is is can we um, sometime over the next year or so um, roll up our sleeves, uh, um, come up with a model. I know that staff has already reached out uh, to other cities and has put together a bit of a comparative models, just so that we can take a look and see, well, what are other cities doing? Particularly college towns, uh, because this is often an issue around in college towns. Um, there's actually been a fair amount of community discussion already. There was a campaign last year. Uh, that's not to say that doesn't need to be community engagement because obviously whatever we put on the table will be a new thing. And we do want to have appropriate community engagement around it, but there has been a lot of um, I'll just say discussion in our community around occupancy. Uh, take a look at what staff has put together on comparables. Uh, maybe put a model out there and let uh, folks in the community say they love it or they hate it. Um, undoubtedly, whatever we would put on the table would be, need to be tweaked, um, as we did with ADUs and co-ops a few years ago. And then the idea would be at some point in time to perhaps pass an ordinance that would change um, our current occupancy law. So that's really, I think, the um, essence of, of what uh, the ask to staff is. I know that several of you have put this forward as a priority. And if I've gotten any of that wrong or left anything out, please do correct me.
Okay. Matt, how do you do?
Uh, well, thanks, Bob. I, I appreciate um, how you've laid out that framework. And I think that's a really good uh, starting place for us to have a community conversation. Um, I will add maybe some, some specificity that we can maybe work from. So staff isn't maybe going in, in too many different directions, trying to narrow down. And you know, Bob brings up a good point about, are we using um, you know, per unit, are, are we using bedrooms? Are we using some just number as our, as our metric? And you know, I, I'd like to maybe start us thinking at, at, at really as just a placemaker to say that we have a rule that says no more than five people. And we just let that be the starting place. And then we maybe move a little either side of that if we so see fit. But I thought I'd just sort of pegged something, put a flag in the sand that that's probably something that I'd like to see us start with. Um, and aside from just changing the definition of the family, I think it's important for us to maybe aside, because even if we don't change the definition, I think it's important for us to think about, can we allow, you know, up to two families to share a house? So independent of changing definition, I would like to see us create that greater flexibility in our community, especially in light of the Marshall Fire and what has transpired and needing to create that flexibility throughout our community. Not in the short term, but for clearly the long term, as it's going to be a while for many of those impacted families to recover. Um, and then I'd like to also touch on, you know, thinking about parking and whether or not, you know, a neighborhood parking program may be a, a way to help minimize some of the impacts of having, you know, five or six cars at a particular house and, and some of those smaller streets around neighborhoods and those impacts. So I think that we already implement those in those areas, some areas in Boulder. And so I think expanding that might help uh, belay some of those uh, perceived impacts in those communities. And lastly, really maybe laying out a timeline um, and thinking about, you know, really, you know, trying to do a study session on this in Q2 of this year, maybe thinking about a draft ordinance to start at Q3, um, do public hearing and, and, and uh, first reading in the middle end of Q3 and get this done by Q4. And we, we had a ballot measure last year, lots of community input. But let's keep in mind also, this ballot measure was also being vetted in our community in 2020. So, so we've had two years of community discussion. Uh, outside of maybe one or two other issues, this is probably the most vetted issue we've had in our community in a long time. And so I think we need to allow that to be what it is, a robust community process and not spend too much time belaboring the points that we've heard over and over for the last two years. And I'm pretty sure we can get this done here before the end of the year. Um, and really making sure that everyone's concerns and people are heard and we can knock this out.
Thanks, Matt. Tara?
Snap mute button again. So the first thing I want to say is I agree with uh, Matt in the area of parking and number of cars. I think that's what, something we really need to keep in mind because in my good old door-to-door um, adventures, people often said they were the most worried about the number of cars. That was one of the things I worry about is the number of cars per house. The other thing was, I also think this is tied into nuisance laws. So if we can strengthen our nuisance laws, I think the community would be more open to something like this. But thirdly, I want to say that although we did have it's there, I don't know that there was a great way to say, yes, we had enough community discussion because the ballot measure was turned down. So yes, we did have the community input, but the ballot measure lost. So I think we need to continue with community effort. I don't think we're done with community input yet. I just want to say just because the ballot measure was turned down. There was no metric as to why it was turned down. We just know what we heard from people.
Thanks, Tara. Erin, how about you?
Well, first of all, um, Bob, thanks for teaming this up and laying out this different variables. That was very helpful. And then uh, Matt basically said almost everything I was going to say. So I'll just ditto Matt. Thanks for that. Um, the one thing I will put uh, also on the table uh, is uh, the idea of looking at occupancy for accessory dwelling units is separate from the main house as part of the conversation that you could have. Um, depending on where we end up with a, a potential change in occupancy limits in general, I'd like us to consider that as well. It's a hard discussion.
Thanks, Erin. Rachel?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, you know, looking at the clock, it's already eight thirty. Um, wanted to say that we don't, you know, we don't need to exactly form the boundaries of this. We just need to like greenlight, do we want occupancy on our work plan? And I, I think there's going to be support for that. And then would say, maybe can we have a, a study session very soon to talk through then like what we want the boundaries and, and shape of this to, or and and shape of this to or direction that this could go into to be mapped out?
Thank you. And I'll tell you that I'm giving it enough space so that people understand what they would be prioritizing to make sure we have a shared understanding, appreciating that we can't figure out all the answers today. So there's a weird balance that we're trying to strike, but feel you on that. Lauren?
Yeah, thanks. And, you know, while we're not trying to figure out the bounds of this today, I do want to sort of put out a possible second way of looking at that. And I think, you know, some aspects of this, I think we might be able to tackle more quickly. You know, things like the two families being able to live together or potentially like owner occupied units having less occupancy restriction. To me feels like a much, I I haven't heard that much opposition from the community around sort of aspects like that. They feel much less complicated. And then maybe there's another another portion of this that is a little more detailed that involves thinking through sort of bigger picture, maybe tying into parking and things like that. You know, one of the things I'd like to see is, if we can tying this to rent control, I think, you know, if we could do something where increased occup, you know, you can get increased occupancy for signing into a rent control agreement. Something like that seems really exciting to me, but also a much bigger lift for staff. So maybe we can separate things into two different tracks.
Thanks, Lauren. Tara?
Things would go faster if I can really use that mute button faster.
In the same place every time, girl.
I just wanted the community to know and also counsel that I am for occupancy reform. My personality is that I always say, yes, well, what about X? So I don't want anybody to think that I'm not for occupancy reform, because I am. So thanks.
Thanks, Tara. All right, Bob, coming back to you. Oh, go ahead, Nicole.
I was just gonna ask about kind of the, you know, timeline for this. Like for me, I just want to put out there, we have done a lot of engagement. I don't think we're starting at zero. You know, I think Bobby, you were spot on with, you know, characterizing this as maybe at most a year of work. But I love Lauren's idea of trying to do some smaller kind of changes while while we're working on the rest of things that, you know, we know there's there's a bit of support for in the community.
So happy to give Nurya or someone else from staff a chance to weigh in on that. But I would also say that probably the timing depends on whether and how all of council prioritizes it later today. But Nurya, did you want to say anything other than TBD on timing?
Yeah, and and I think and I I think Rachel was getting to this as she was talking about her boundaries that today really, and Chris Messcheck will know, because this is my first retreat as well in the city of Boulder. But my understanding is really is about getting to the priorities. And then there's more scoping to be done and we can share with you what we think time tables as we move forward. But certainly, this is really helpful as we start to narrow, because that'll let us refine some of that work. I know it's early morning, David, but I just wanted to give you a chance, if you wanted to chime in on this. But if not, I think just knowing that occupancy in general, the way you've talked about it is something that is of interest. We will figure out how to put that on a timeline, given how the other priorities shake out, right?
Yeah. And just a couple of comments. I like the way that Bob Yates laid it out in terms of kind of a very deliberate step oriented process. I liked the ideas of, you know, if we're, if we want to move quickly, breaking it down into chewable bites and doing those in chewable bites. But I do want to just say that in my experience, occupancy is, it's kind of a passionate topic when raised in this community. So I would, I would expect people to bring their passion to it. And in terms of like, I know people are talking about a lot of community engagement has been done on this. I I I don't know how to process that, and we don't have to process it here. But the engagement has been about one proposal. So the only thing that I take away from that is the community rejected one proposal. So something less than that one proposal might be okay. But that's what I, that's what I take away from kind of election-based community engagement. So I do think that community engagement will be an important feature of any project that we put forward. So thank you.
Thanks, David. So Bob, coming back to you, what I put on my list, tell me if you're satisfied with this, is do a comparative analysis from other communities and then develop a model occupancy approach and solicit community input with an eye toward ordinance change.
I think that's great. And I just thank you for the great discussion. And it sounds like this will probably end up on the party list. I just want to really, really emphasize, and I know that my colleagues would join me in this. This is not, as David said, this is not a do-over of ballot measure three hundred. This is not that measure. What we're talking about is, is there something different than that that the community would support? And so I want to be really, really clear, this is not a do-over. This is a, we heard forty-eight percent of people want to do something occupancy, and even some of the fifty-two percent would like to do something about occupancy. What shall we do about it?
Awesome. Thanks, Bob. All right, I'm prepared to move on from occupancy. Stop me if that's, you're not ready. Hot diggity. All right. Our next one, speaking of Bob, is other planning items, including TBAP two. That was work that you were going to do with Aaron. We heard a little bit about TBAP two already today. Fellas, what kind of homework did you generate for us on this topic?
I think Aaron's going to pretty much take the lead on this one, Aaron. I'll join in, but once you go ahead and start.
Sure. Okay, so we already talked about TBAP yesterday, but this is kind of where it was originally living, was in the planning area. So we discussed the, it seems like a majority council has some interest in that and the planning department is up for and willing to take it on. So we heard about that yesterday. Another one was I had put on my list, the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan Implementation. We have heard from staff that that's already underway and planned. So that seems like it's basically covered. Another one that I had brought up was the Fort Chambers Management Plan and how we involve the tribes and potential future ownership and management and such. And we heard from Dan Burke in scoping discussions, they're already planning on doing that. So it doesn't seem like that needs to be necessarily highlighted as a separate item, because it's already underway. Another one that ended up under this bucket was Mark's point about making sure that we are able to hold developers to their promises when it comes to affordable housing and inclusionary housing. And we did tuck that into the other inclusionary housing ordinance work yesterday. And so, Mark, are you comfortable with that being in the scope of looking at different inclusionary housing policies in general?
Absolutely, yes.
Great, thanks for that. And then the the one other item I think that we haven't really talked about is the Area Three Planning Reserve. So, you know, we have the, well, just just to catch the folks up if they haven't been following, that's that's a section of land north of town, north of Highway thirty-six. It's the north of town that has been reserved for potential future development, but it requires a number of steps before it's eligible for annexation into the city. And some of those steps can only be taken during a major update to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Those only happen every ten years, so it's an infrequent opportunity. The next one's coming up in twenty twenty-five. But in order to consider changing the designation on that land so that it's eligible for annexation, you first have to do an urban services study for folks to go look at whether, what it would take and whether we have the capacity to absorb that land into the city. And that's a fairly time-consuming process. So there was an ask from multiple council members to go ahead and get that process started in the next year or so, in 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 a timeframe such that the planning reserve would be, or that study would be complete, such that we could consider the annexation of that land in the next major update, the comprehensive plan in twenty twenty-five. So I think that we already heard some thoughts, I believe, from the planning department that this seemed doable in twenty twenty-three. But David, do you want to reiterate that or?
Hold on, Aaron. We also had assign Mark to do some homework thinking on this particular item to further refine this concept if it was needed. So maybe Mark could jump in before we hear from David. Aren't you going to refer to David if you want to hear that first?
Do you want me to go?
What's your preference? Do you want David to speak or you want to jump in first? You call it.
I'll jump in, not a problem. You know, I did look at this as a as a homework assignment. And I had the opportunity to speak to Chris Metrick about it at some length. And the first, the first lesson I derived from that is be careful when you speak to Chris, because at the end of that conversation, you will probably be taking out your wallet and gleefully handing over your money to him. He can be quite convincing. There is a, essentially a nineteen-step process for doing this. And that does not include the disposition process by parks, since some of the land was acquired with a dedicated sales tax for acquisition of parkland. So it is an extremely complex project. My thought had originally been, look, let's just get the consultants going. It is, to some extent, a consultant-driven process. Let's just get them going and jumpstart the analysis. But I was convinced after speaking with Chris that, one, we lack the resources at the moment to properly scope that consultant work. And we lack the resources at the moment to properly guide and monitor that consultant work. So my ask, as I thought about this, would be, staff indicated they could begin this in twenty twenty-three. I would want them to commit to that and to hold them to that, because I think it is very important that we do this by the twenty twenty-five timeframe. As I said, it's it's quite lengthy, it's quite complex. But I'm hoping that by the beginning of twenty twenty-three or earlier, if resources become available, to commence the scoping and the retention of consultants and getting the thing going. Because basically, there are over twenty steps to be taken, including county commissioners, planning board, parks and council. So I would, I would want to at least get some indication that by twenty twenty-three, we can begin this work and get it done in time for the twenty twenty-five update. That would be my ask.
Lots of things happening here. First, I don't know if you noticed this, Mark, but first, when you started, it was nineteen steps. And then you talked yourself up to more than twenty. I thought that was an exciting development.
Well, that that includes the parks disposition process, which we, we haven't even begun, I haven't begun to look at that yet.
I hear you. David, did you want to say a few words before I go to several members of council who have their hands up?
No, I think Mark covered it quite well.
Thank you. Aaron, did you want to say anything else before I go to your colleagues on council?
Mark, that was great. Thanks for for that additional information. I just, I just wanted to clarify, as I understand it, the parks disposition isn't necessary to bring that land into the city. That could be a potential additional future step if we wanted to do something other than a park up there. But but I don't think that's necessary for the planning reserve project.
Not necessary if we want to use it as park. If we want to use that land as something else, housing, for instance, we would have to do a disposition.
It's just another step if we want to consider.
Yes.
Twenty-five steps, got it, and more steppy. David, did you want to add anything on the disposition question?
No, no, but the disposition of parkland is very similar to the disposition of open space. So you need, it's a two-body approval with Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the council. And then I guess the other thing too is, one thing that we typically try to address in these issues is the fact that the money that was used to purchase that land was voter, was a voter-approved sales tax and voter-approved bonding authority. So we would need to work through those issues as well.
Complicated conversation if you.
A quick colloquy on that question. Yep, to David. Is it, if you were to dispose of parks land, is it similar to open space where the parks land would have to receive something, you know, that that makes them whole, kind of?
Probably. You know, it's, the charter is not particularly clear on the topic. I think that, you know, when we did the parks bond and sales tax in the mid nineties, you know, it was quite detailed in terms of what we were going to buy. And I think that in the kind of the late nineties, the council changed direction a little bit on how we were going about that. And they put their change of direction to the voters as well. So it, we've, that's probably very conservative. But we have dealt with those issues quite conservatively in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you all. Bob, what do you got?
Just two things. Well, I wanted to maybe provide for the community a little bit of context, because we're kind of throwing some things around. And I want to make sure that we're all more or less on the same page. These are directionally correct numbers, I think, but it can be corrected by David or others. First of all, the Area Three Planning Reserve is about five hundred acres, as as Aaron said, northeast of town. Some of that is owned by the city and some of that is in private hands. Among the land that's owned by the city, roughly two hundred acres is this designated parkland, which we'd have to deal with. But then there are several acres that are owned by the city that are not designated parkland. So I want to make sure that there's really three buckets of land that we're talking about, but it's a lot of land. The second, I guess, a comment on the proposal, post-timeframe. I I know that we're trying to back up, back against the twenty twenty-five comp plan update, which I think none of us want to slip, since it only happens once every ten years. And so one thing that I would ask of staff is, if twenty twenty-three is, is you all think that that is going to give you adequate time, because remember, council approved the, based on Urban Services Study two years ago, right now, in January of twenty twenty-two, at a council retreat. And and then that got sidelined by COVID. And I think we were told back then that it would take two to three years to do. And as Mark indicated, it's either nineteen, nineteen or twenty steps. If staff is confident that this based on Urban Services Study can start in twenty twenty-three and be done in time to launch the twenty twenty-five comp plan update, that's great. What might be helpful to give council and the community some comfort is perhaps later this year, we could have a more detailed explanation. Maybe that study section, this doesn't have to be long, but just walk us through those nineteen or twenty steps, how that would work against the timeline. And and give us comfort that if it doesn't start until twenty twenty-three, it will in fact be done by the end of twenty twenty-four, so that we can get, so we can get the comp plan going at that point in time. So my my supplemental request would be, help us understand what steps are necessary and when they're going to happen so that we don't slip the comp plan.
And I think we can do that. There was a nice memo that was put together a couple of years ago that provided quite a bit of detail. And the the main thing that we need to get done is the baseline urban services study. And I think that the estimate even back then was that 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 process would take about a year.
Thanks, David. Nicole?
Thank you. Thanks, thanks, thanks for that presentation discussion. So I think underlying this, this discussion about the planning reserve is a recognition that we need some more housing, right, for workforce, for others. We need to make housing more affordable. We discussed last night some opportunities that are available and ideas for increasing housing with land that's already developed or that's on its way to being developed. So I'm thinking about, you know, some of our discussions around zoning changes and making things duplexes or triplexes. The East Boulder Subcommunity Planning Process, right, has some housing that is targeted TBAP phase two. That's another, another way. And then, of course, we've got CS out there. And so, David, my question is for you without a context. How would this work on the planning reserve impact, if at all, these other things that are already in the works? That's my first question, and I think I may have one follow-up.
Well, I think, you know, it's, 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 they're all resource issues. But I think that in terms of, you know, my, you know, just kind of guessing in terms of what it's going to take to project manage that project, it's going to take a planner. And we'll need to have a planner, you know, whether that planner is, we hire another planner or we task one of the existing planners that we'll be hiring. I think that that's probably going to be the main thing, is that that we just have resources to do everything that we want to do. And then the other thing that I would add is a lot of the stuff that you were kind of in your list, just in terms of how we're organized, we have, we also have planners that they're, I guess, kind of quasi-implementers and that they're code drafters. And a lot of that work would actually probably be resting with that group in the in the department.
So it wouldn't really be affecting some of the ability to do some of the other things we talked about last night.
I don't think so. And like I said, it's going to be hiring up, making sure that we have the resources we need to hit the priorities. And if we don't, we will probably be back saying, we're short resourced. And if you want to get this done, we need to figure out how we're going to either shift priorities or add resources to get it done.
Okay. And then as a, as a follow-up question, and this again is not me asking for a specific number. It's just sort of a general off-the-cuff response to. response to this question. If we were to think about all of the developed land in the city that, you know, is currently single-family home, that's parking lot, that's, you know, all these things where we're really not able to put housing. What do you see as sort of the capacity of what we currently have developed for putting in place more housing versus the capacity for land that's not developed for more housing? Or are they just two totally separate issues?
Well, I think it's kind of, what's your vision for that land? You know, we have continually, you know, we've been kind of up against our growth boundary for a while, and we've been continuing to find other ways of getting housing into our community. And, you know, just in terms of how we've evolved as a community, you know, twenty years ago, we were kind of into, you know, like in our industrial zones, into a suburban model. And I think that we're moving away from the suburban model and into a more urban models, and there's probably an awful lot of potential. You know, certainly, you know, East Thirty Street.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, David. Thanks, Nicole. Junie?
Thank you, Heather. I just need to clarify something from this discussion, and I hear many, many things. I think, Mark, you were talking about twenty different things that needs to happen, and I just want to maybe ask for some clarity here, because I'm thinking the Urban Services Study is just a study to know what can we do with that piece of land, what can happen, whether we can have affordable housing. It's not concrete that it's going to be one thing. So I'm trying to figure out, it seemed to me this discussion is already planning on what's going to happen on on the land. Those would be the twenty different things that need to happen. But the urban studies is the first step. And then the, my question is, or at least my point of clarification is, once we get that urban studies done, we would have to come, my understanding is, we would have to come back to council again to get approval for whatever needs to happen. Am I correct?
That's correct. So just in terms of the process, right? So, and Chris, he can either sell us a pickup truck, or correct me if I'm wrong. But, but the baseline Urban Services Study, for the most part, that's about whether or not we have, like, the transportation and utility capacity to serve the Planning Reserve. So that's like, can we do it? Once you get through that, then you, you have kind of an inward conversation as a community to talk a little bit about, so are we at a point where we can't really fulfill all of our needs within our existing city limits in the existing service area? And if the answer to that is, no, we need more land, then, then the last step in that process is you actually do the planning for the area. You start to decide, you know, do you want housing? Do you want a mixed use? Do you want, where does the grocery store go? All of those kind of things are done at the end, and, you know, in basically what would be something similar to like a sub-community or a sub-area planning process. And I see Chris just showed up. All right.
Chris, would you like to sell us a thing?
No, I think David did a great job selling it.
All right. Thanks. Tara?
Thank you for showing me where that meat button is. I was a lot faster this. It never moves. So we talked about, on the parks, you know, there was a, the Parks Department slash Parks Board wrote us, and Area Three was on there. And we have been talking about parks disposals. So do you mind if I ask Ally Rhodes if she has anything she wants to say, since parks is a big part of the discussion of Area Three?
Happy to have you ask Ally. Is Ally here? There she is. Hi, Ally.
I can, and I am a morning person, but maybe watched more than one episode of Ozarks last night. But Council Ally Rhodes, Director of Parks and Recreation, here's, here's what I'll add. David obviously knows well the, the baseline Urban Services Study information. What I want to add for your consideration is that is, in addition to green space, public space needs for anything that's developed in Area Three, it is critical for the larger system. And in the second quarter of this year, I'll remind the previous council members, and for new council members, we're actually going to be giving you an update this quarter, so you're prepared for that study session. But development of Area Three is identified in our needs assessment as something that would be necessary if we wanted to maintain our acres per capita. And that'll be just an important policy conversation as our community densifies the level of green space. Where and how we want to provide that will be important. So thanks for the opportunity, Tara.
All right, we got a couple more questions, and then council, we probably want to get this one on the list, and you can prioritize it if you feel so inclined. But let's hear what's on Rachel's mind, and then what's on Aaron's mind.
Mine's not a question, just wanted to share that in response to some other questions, like this study and Planning Reserve, and we'll see the same thing with Mark's airport lift in a little bit. It's almost aggravating to spend staff time on these things right now, because we're not going to, you know, we're not going to get anything. It's almost like, you know, priming your wall or something, you know, it's not, it's dissatisfying. But we are only able to look at TVAP, too, because a previous council, you know, got that going. And so this is not really about, like, solving Boulder's problems of 2022. As I see it, this is saying the 2040 council is going to have options, because we're setting it up now. So that's how I'm looking at it. Thanks.
Thanks, Rachel. Aaron?
Yeah, I was going to say basically that. This is a long play. You have to make a few long plays along with your short plays. So it's worth looking at in that, that sense. And I appreciated the ally, that context on the parks. And I'll just reiterate that the question about whether or not to bring Area, the Planning Reserve into the city is independent from the question about whether we want all of that land to save parks land. So we're in no way, by saying we want to move forward, that it says, saying that we would dispose parkland. So it would be a much later conversation, just to be clear.
And that's really helpful for me to come back to both you and Mark. But Mark, first, what I've added to the list for council's consideration as a priority is initiate Urban Services Study for Area Three.
Yes, commencing 2023.
Okay.
Sorry, Area Three Planning Reserve, just to be clear.
Planning Reserve. Okay.
Area Three is like all of the undeveloped land around the city.
So on the timing, I did ask you to consider this. My thinking for how we'll do the prioritization is we'll ask you all to prioritize the things. And then we can have a discussion once we see the list of which ones, based on your shared priorities, are the right ones to do in 2022 versus 2023 in a conversation with staff capacity. So I'll have you all note Mark's suggestion that this is an item that would make sense to him for 2023, but we can also visit more about that. Should this make your list of highest priorities? Rachel or Nicole, did you want to say a thing before I move on to our next topic?
Old hand.
Old hand. How about you, Nicole?
I do have one, just, just one very, I think it's a very quick clarifying question. So as I understand it, then if this were not on the work plan in the next two years, we would miss our opportunity to incorporate this into the 2025 updates to the, our sort of overall plan. Is that correct? This is like, it's a, it's a narrow window of time that we have to get this in.
Yeah, and that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good clarifying question. Thanks, Nicole. All right, friends. This brings us now to the last item for which we had homework, which was elections. And my elections team was Matt and Junie. Matt, Junie, how did you all tackle this? What scoop?
We did, and we got, we got some slides. To toss those up if we could, Taylor. Thank you so much. So we have, at the end of the day, what we have here, and I don't know why the, oh, that's, there's a couple of slides to the start of that on election reform. I think that's a couple of slides in. There it is. Awesome. Thank you. So it starts with a Y, and there's really two things that we've considered consolidated with regards to election reform. And I think all of this is in the umbrella of election integrity and election form is at the forefront of just about everything we're hearing at the state and national level. And we are not insulated here in Boulder from needing to do our work to protect and strengthen our democratic principles. And so the core asks here are two things, establishing an election commission and expediting a ballot measure to consider moving our elections here. At the end of the day, this is, I'm starting to think more holistically with our racial equity and inclusion goals, and thinking about not just them in the silo of individual departments or city function, but more broadly as to how are we being completely inclusive of people, our fundamental underpinnings of how we do anything in our community, which is through our elected process and how we express ourselves with those that we want to represent and set priorities like we're doing today. And so it's really important that that's why election reform is a topic that we are doing. And so what we're going to start with here, if we go to the next slide, is really the why for establishing an election commission. I was fortunate enough to be a part of the Campaign Finance and Election Reform Working Group that David helped lead. And so that was really fun, working with him and the City Attorney's Office and a number of folks in our community. But it was narrow in scope, and it was reactionary by design. And with the challenges that are going to be in front of us with establishing our mayor choice, electing our mayor, ranked choice voting, and some of the ripples it creates, considering even your election, and a multitude of other things. This is where we really think that an election commission can really set us up to start thinking about these things in a proactive manner for many, many years to come. Because throughout the community, there's a lot of these great ideas percolating out, be it fair pay for council, proportional representation, ongoing campaign finance tweaks, and also allowing this to have greater synergy with the Charter and Elections Committee. But most of all, it's really about elevating the equity and inclusion priorities in our democratic process as a whole. And so that's really the why. And then what I'll turn to now is Junie to talk about the how.
Thank you, Matt. And the how do we do this really is?
Next slide, David. Sorry.
Asking council to put this ballot measure on for 2022, but however not starting, not implementing until quarter one, 2024. That would give council, that would give the city the opportunity to really plan and implement the entire what we're asking for. So we know, for instance, once this ballot measure is passed in 2022, hopefully, right, the community, community passed it. From twenty, from November 2022 until January, you have the entire year to implement, to ensure here's what the process looked like, because right now, we don't have that. But I think once the ballot measure is in place, once, you know, it's been implemented, we can start working on being operational. Do you want to add something else, Matt?
Yeah, we did. And I just wanted to clarify from the City Attorney's Office that it doesn't have to be done through ballot measure. We just found that out yesterday. We can do this legislatively, so it actually avoids that whole sequence, which is great. We can just decide to create this commission ourselves and, and then go, and go forward in that capacity. So there is a much lower, more, a much lower barrier of entry should we choose to take it. And it doesn't involve the complexity of a ballot measure or hoping for passage from the voters. And so thank you for Teresa for clarifying that in our charter language at sort of the eleventh hour. So appreciate that. All right. So that, that really touches on establishing an election commission, the why, the how, and the runway we're setting out there in deference with staff and their needs in preparing us for the mayor election in RCV in 2023. And then the next thing we have coming up here is talking about even your elections. I'm happy to start it, but this was Nicole's, this was Nicole's beast. And so I'm happy to sort of just lay a little bit and then let her run with it. And if there's any color I can add to it, I'd be happy to do so. And so if we can go to the next slide, Taylor? So really, starting with, with, with just the why, at the end of the day, this comes down to that general premise of election reform, which is how are we more inclusive? How are we including more people in our process? The more people voting, the stronger our democracy. But also the better we have confidence that the work we are doing, the priorities we set, actually truly represent a majority of this community. And that is fundamental to helping, I think, bridge that widening political divide in our community and the polarization. Is if we are actually hearing from a majority, led by representatives, spoken, speaking for that majority, we by definition are going to bridge that political divide. And I think that that's something that I think all of us would hope to see in our community, and this is certainly a vehicle to do that. And the numbers speak for themselves in terms of the amount of voter turnout we can get, like, on an odd-year election. We celebrate, my gosh, we got an extra thousand people to participate in our odd-year election and spent many thousands of dollars and thousands of hours to do it. We just by ordinance change can immediately get 25,000 more people to participate, and we can hear their voice, a sign of the pen. So this is an easy lift, considering the magnitude of impact that we can have on our community and making sure more people are heard. So I will let Nicole take over. If she wants to touch on this slide or the next one on the how, I leave it to her to drive from here.
Thanks, Matt. I appreciate it. Thank you for putting these slides together. This is fantastic. Yeah, so no, I mean, this, you know, I think as, as Matt's referring to, you know, this is one of the ways that we can shore up our local democracy and really ensure that we have representative democracy right now by electing city leaders in odd years. We are disproportionately representing people who turn out in odd years, which are not quite the same people who are turning out in even years. And, you know, Matt is noting here that the, the people who tend to be left out of odd-year elections disproportionately are voters that are younger, lower-income renters, and those coming from more marginalized communities. So moving to even-year elections is a relatively straightforward way. I say that. I see you, city clerk. I don't, I don't mean to say this is nothing, but it's a relatively easy way for us to dramatically increase the number of people whose voices are being heard in electing our local leaders, particularly with the national issues that are going on around voter suppression. I, I think it's important just for us to recognize that we have the potential to include tens of thousands more people in our local democracy. Do you want to go to the next slide? I can talk about how a little bit. Thank you. So basically, I think all this really would take is putting together a ballot measure for 2022 to move our elections to even years. And what better time than the 2022 even-year election? I think this would start with just some conversations. We've already been in touch with Teresa. Thank you for all your feedback, Teresa. And, you know, looking at state laws, this is, this is well within our, our purview as municipality. But we certainly need to have some conversations with the county clerk to get some thoughts on process and implementation. We could start this in 2024. And, yeah, there, there's some state laws that set out how we can go about this. We do have the ability to move from between even and odd-year elections. It would require a vote of, of our community. And I think there's, there's some guidance in terms of what happens moving to even-year elections. So for example, we cannot shorten anybody's terms. So this would, this would basically be extending the term of whoever happens to be serving when, when this would be implemented, a year, just to get us on on track. And then the other, I think, issue that we would be looking at here is that we would, we can't have different levels of municipal elections in different years. So we couldn't say elect our mayor in an odd year and elect the rest of council in an even year. It would all need to be together. Did I miss anything, Matt? For Junie?
No, you nailed it. There's just one more slide at the end, and then I guess, then we'd be ready for questions and such. I will touch on that in this sort of dialogue of, you know, an election commission and, and talking to John Morris, our new election administrator. You know, it does sort of beg the question on, and this is, you know, just something to propose, whether we want to elevate it now or just keep in the back of our mind is something we want to maybe tackle is considering empowering our municipal judge to adjudicate the campaign finance and other election violations. Our judge is fundamentally designed, and, and her work is built on looking at the law and expeditiously moving through figuring out resolution. And it takes some of that burden off our clerk's office and the election administrator to try to do that stuff when they're already so busy just trying to make us have a functionally strong process and making sure all our reports and all that stuff are lined up. It really gives them some breath, but then also take something which really is, you know, a legal debate and a legal question, put in the hands of our municipal judge. So just food for thought, doesn't necessarily have to be a priority here, but this conversation kind of kept nudging in this sort of dialogue. So just wanted to put that out there for, for some thought and conversation, maybe save it for later, but wanted to put it out there. Questions?
Great. Thanks. Tara, a question?
Comment question. I'm all about, I love your enthusiasm.
Comment question. I'm all about, I love your enthusiasm, Nicole and Matt. I just, I have one question. What I do like about the odd years is that we totally focus on local politics versus what we know what's going to happen in 2024, which is we're going, we all know what's going to happen in 2024. So my concern is that we're not going to as much focus on local politics if we combine it with national politics. Something that Eric Bud said, shout out to Eric Bud, I read your tweets, is that's why he loves being involved in local politics because national politics is depressing. Sorry if I got that wrong, but that was what I took from that. So we must have had a reason for putting it on odd years. I know we did. And I know Bobby Yates knows what that is. I'm sure about it. So before we jump into this, I would really like to look at the pros and cons. You know how I love to do that and see what is really the best thing. Of course, the more voters, the better. But I, I do want to talk about the pros and cons, if that's okay, before we do any of this.
Okay. And of course, you don't need to debate the pros and cons now. That would be part of a conversation if you all decide to prioritize this. But take the additional hands that are up. Rachel? You're muted, Rachel.
One question, thanks. Maybe for Nuria or Chris Messcheck. I'm not sure. At our last council, we green lighted like a, a blue ribbon commission on some elections related or, or I, I think the, the exact question was maybe council pay and whether to do a vote on that. So just wondering what that, who's on that group and what they're working on right now.
Oh, I'm going to have to defer to that again before my time, but I'll defer to Chris because he knows all the answers to a million things that happened before I arrived. Chris, knower of things.
That's a good one. For the question. And I'm trying to remember back, there were, there, there's a couple of pieces. One, obviously, many of the council members know there was a elections working group that worked on campaign finance reform. And then there are many times that the council's charter committee will discuss charter amendments, one of which is council pay, which has been discussed several times. So.
Well, this was specifically the last retreat a year ago where we authorized a, like a blue ribbon panel.
Let me go back and look at the notes. My memory is not jumping up with that one right away.
Okay. So I, I might suggest that maybe that wasn't ever kicked off, which, which I would have thought we were working on it. And, and what I was going to say is like, can they just, you know, look also at some of this election stuff that was in Matt's first point? Because I, I think there's some synergies there. So I, I do believe there's, but I don't even know what a blue ribbon panel is exactly, but we're, I think we're supposed to have one. So that was my first question. And then second, just to clarify something that Nicole said, if we vote on this in 2022 and then it's active in 2024, is that almost like a, a sentence of an extra year for those of us who are currently serving? Just so I understand exactly what we're looking at. I'm done in 2023. I have like a calendar. I'm sure a lot of Boulderites have like, how many more days Rachel's gone? So what? What are we looking at here?
This, this would be part of our, you know, discussion around that. But, you know, my understanding of the way that state law is written is that yes, it, it would be that commitment.
And I want to apologize to you about half a boulder and my husband, if that's the case.
Yeah, yeah. No, and, and, but, but, you know, I think, I think this is right, part of the discussion. And this is where, you know, it comes down to when would we choose to implement this? And that could be part of the current council's discussion, right? Because it's certainly a different ask if we are saying, hey, people who are going to run in 2023 know that this is potentially coming versus saying, oh, sorry, gotcha. You get an extra year, right? So it's, it's a different thing. And I don't know, Matt or Junie, if you have anything to add to that.
No, you're right. There, there's very clear guidance in Colorado revised statutes on this. So we don't have to make up anything. We have the guidance. It's, it's pretty crystal clear what needs to be done. We just have to set the date and it triggers those actions.
Great. Several things. I'm not going to talk about the odd year, even year election, because that's been talked about pretty extensively. Getting back to the question that was posed to Chris, I actually think that the Blue Ribbon Commission was not talked about at the retreat last year, but it was actually talked about by the Charter Committee more in the spring of last year. That committee has never been assigned or appointed. It's time for us to do that. So we should be working with Nurya and Chris about getting that committee assigned. I think we talked about doing that early this year. So it's early this year. So that that committee could come back with some recommendations in the spring or early summer. So the council could potentially put a measure on the ballot in 2022. So that's just my recollection of what we did. And so we're ready to go on that. I don't think that has to be a work plan item. We already agreed we do it. We just need to pick the people and get them going. Second, I, so inside the odd even year elections, it sounds like there's two different things that Matt and Judy brought forward. One was, two other things. One was the election commission. I, I just would weigh in that unless I hear a really compelling reason to have a community vote on forming one, my preference would be to have that done legislatively. We could talk about the work plan and what staff impacts that would be, but I just don't understand that that would be a particular advantage that we've created boards and commissions all the time. I think we have the power to do that. I think Teresa's confirmed that. So I think we could, if, if it's the will of council, we could put that on a work plan for this year or next year and simply form one and not worry about a ballot measure. And then finally, I think it's a different thing. It's related, but different thing of having the municipal judge be the adjudicator of disputes relating to elections. And that's something I would want to do right away. It was actually an idea that I think I raised with you, Matt. It's something that I've always thought we should do. I haven't talked to Judge Cook about it, but I know it should be great. It's her job to receive evidence and to make hard decisions based on the law. And so that's something that I think we could do pretty quickly if Judge Cook and her team feels like they have the capacity. I, I would, I would look at that as almost a sec, separate work item, which I don't think would take a whole lot of staff time. Staff can disagree if they wish. And if that's the will of council and Judge Cook is going to take that on, I think we could do that relatively quickly so that we're teed up for this coming election.
Okay. And I see that Judge Cook is, was with us. So Bob, do you want to hear from her at this time? And then we'll circle back to the rest of our council.
I didn't want to put Judge Cook on the spot. So because she may be hearing this for the first time. So if she wants to weigh in, that would be great. But if she wants to think about it for a while, Your Honor, I'd be happy to hear about it later.
So this is sort of a tricky area for a judge. It's really not the role of a judge to weigh in on policy decisions. That's your role as the legislators. But I will tell you that if you did decide to make this legislative change and this kinds of cases ended up on our caseload, as of this point in time, I don't see that being a problem. We don't have experience with these kinds of cases other than the one that is currently pending and it's in the very early stages. So I don't know what the outcome, you know, in terms of the overall workload is going to be, we'll know better after we've worked through this case.
Okay. So if council were to prioritize this, it was, it would not be a significant impact to your workload. Is that correct?
That, that will always depend on the number of disputes that we might have to adjudicate.
Fair enough. All right. Thanks a bunch. All right. Mark.
My, my term is up in 2025. If you need somebody to shorten their term, we could have a good conversation about that. I am not sure that support for some of these amendments can be derived from the fact that we changed the way we elect our mayor. They're all separate propositions and need to be treated that way. I believe that there is a history of the community turning down pay increases for council. I happen to, to agree with increasing pay, making it fair pay to get a, a better range of council candidates, but I'm not sure the community is going to be supportive of that. And I happen to agree with, with Tara about changing from odd year to even year elections. That will simply suck all of the air out of the the council elections. If you're electing a president and you're electing a, a senator and you're electing a councilman, I, I just don't see that there'll be any attention paid to these council elections. And the council elections are quite important for the city of Boulder. And, you know, it, it is not the case that people are left out. Whether people choose to vote or don't vote, there is no impediment to people voting. We should be trying to encourage more people to vote and to increase participation. But the fact that municipal elections generate fewer votes than national elections is, is, is not a case of voter suppression. It's simply a, a fact of, of life. But I think it's a benefit to have focus on those municipal elections because they have great impact on the city of Boulder. Having said that, if we want to look at it, I'm, I'm happy to look at almost anything. I'm just not sure that, that the support for those changes derives simply from the fact that the community supported a different way of electing our mayor. And, and frankly, electing our mayor in one of those years, that itself will suck some oxygen out of the room. And if you're running for council in a non-mayoral capacity, you're not going to be, nobody's going to pay attention to you. So I'm, I'm not sure. Again, I'm happy to look at it, but I'm just not sure. It's, it's a good thing for the city of Boulder.
Can I, can I respond to that? Just in, in terms of some of the data, Mark, that, that's out there. So, you know, we, we would not be kind of the first. And then I think there, there were two parts to what you just said. I'm going to take the first part. And I think Matt will be a great person to respond to sort of the, the second part of, of what you were commenting on. But we actually have data from other cities and other states that have made this switch. So California, for example, a few years ago, made a state law that any municipality where the turnout in odd years is 25% or more or less than it is in even years, they need to switch to even your elections. And there are some other cities, Phoenix recently did this, some others that have tried this as well. And you are correct that not quite as like, there are down ballot fall offs, right? People will vote for more of the national and state level elections than they will for the municipal elections. But the difference between odd and even years in those municipal elections is still very significant. It's still increasing turnout substantially even in those. So, you know, yes, there's down ballot fallout, but the data from other cities that have tried this shows that there's still many more people participating. And Matt, I saw you perk up at the kind of discussions about not, not having barriers in place for people in odd year elections. And so I, I just want to hand that part to you.
Hold on one second. I'd love to hear from Matt and then from Aaron. And then I would ask you not to debate the merits of this any longer. And folks can decide whether they'd like to prioritize it for further discussion later. Go ahead, Matt.
I, I appreciate that. And thanks for throwing in some, some important data points there, Nicole. Really two pieces. And, and this is going to be part of the larger debate, but it is, it is really incumbent on us to recognize the historical context in which odd year elections were established. And it is not a pretty history. And I think we have to understand that it might not be the reason we do it now, but it was the reason it was established and the ramifications of that still live large in our community today in terms of the design to disenfranchise people. So, so I think like a lot of things, it's important, we can have that debate later, but it is a really core thing for us to kind of just put the air and oxygen into for that, for that conversation. Because it is, is really important again for our equity and our inclusion goals to recognize that historical context and apply actions today to make sure that we are not repeating those mistakes or continuing to exacerbate that. So I think that's just a fundamental piece for us to recognize right off the bat. And furthermore, we see that even down ballot, when we had the municipalization, we, we're getting 54,000 people to vote on that. So, so even down ballot, a very passionate issue, we're getting participation, we're getting engagement. And we have to have faith that our electorate is going to be smart and they're going to be engaged and they're going to work down ballot. And when we still get 25,000 more people participating, I'll take that seven days a week and twice on Sunday.
Matt. All right, Aaron.
Yes, I'm very interested in, in exploring this as part of the work plan. But just to Heather's point, we, if we put it on the work plan, which I hope we will, we get to have the robust discussion of the pros and cons as well as when it might phase in and get implemented, right? So that those would all be for the future discussions. But I had a question for, for you all. The, I really like the idea of the election commission. And it makes sense that it would get started a little later because of the need to implement the ranked choice voting in 2023. And so is that really something you're proposing as a priority item for this council, given that it wouldn't really start until 1-1-2024? Or, or like, do we have to put this on a, on a major list in order to, to implement that? Given that we could do it legislatively, like near the end of 2023?
Erin, that, that's a great question. And the, the runway provided and the fact that, you know, we can do this legislatively, we're, we're not bound to any clock within an election cycle, right? So, so we do have a lot more freedom than if we're bound to an election cycle or, or every November. The, the runway was really backing off from conversations with Alicia and John and, and Teresa about just the workload that is present to get ready for the, the mayor election and trying to spread out some of the preparatory work to build this commission, because it's going to be pretty heavy on the city attorney's office and our election administrator office and county clerk. I mean, they're literally going to be the support network for this. So we, in really just asking it was, if we gave you space to get ready for beginning of 2024, can you fold that in while you're also working on the 2023 stuff versus trying to front load it at the beginning of 2023? And they said that they, that was a much better spacing for them to accommodate. And it would give them a chance to better identify the resources that might be necessary to really make sure when this election commission starts, it starts fully equipped and ready to really go rather than kind of failing to launch, because it doesn't quite have all the resources in place to make it work. And when dealing with the intricacies of elections, you don't want to kind of have failures to launch because the ramifications are so fundamentally important.
I totally understand that. Just to the, the question about like how this gets on the work plan, like I guess we'll talk about it shortly, but maybe it's a, like a tuck in kind of a thing to come back to next year as opposed to one of our top 12 or whatever it is.
I would just defer, I agree with you. Just, I would defer to staff on when they feel that they need that runway for us to make that decision to give them the time to prep that. So I agree with you. I think we have a lot of flexibility in when we can actually activate this.
First, we'll need to see if it's a priority of council and staff can then visit with you later this morning about when and how to do it, if it is a priority. So Matt, Junie, Nicole, just want to check that I have the language right. I do have three items for potential prioritization by council. I have create an election commission to begin work in Q1 2024. Again, little wiggle room perhaps on the timing on that. Put in measure on the 2022 ballot to move elections to even years. And then the third one is a legislative decision regarding having the judge and not the clerk adjudicate campaign issues. Are those the three right ones? I have the language close enough? Okay. Lovely. Thank you all very much. That'll be a fun discussion. Any one of those will be interesting. So we'll see what shakes out of those. All right. So that concludes the topics for which we had specific council homework. The remaining topics are things that one or two of you suggested as part of your priorities. And then count, staff gave some feedback on how much lift there is. Since that conversation on Tuesday night, staff has done some additional thinking about which of the items that you proposed for these other topics, they think are already underway. And which of those items maybe are, are, are new lifts or kind of underway? And so the first topic that we have here is nuisance abatement. And for this item, we had suggestions on this topic from both Tara and Mark. And just going to pop back over to my idea flipboard. So what, what we had staff do, and Nurya can visit about this a little bit, is these green checks mean that staff thinks that they're already doing the thing based on how they understood it. And they think they're doing what you, what you asked. Where there's this little two out of three stars, that means they think they're doing something that's pretty close to what you asked, but we're not entirely sure yet. So we'll visit about that. So Nurya, can you tackle the, these items and just explain your thinking here? And then we'll hear from Tara and Mark how they're feeling about it.
I sure can. But as always, I let staff correct me if I say anything that goes against what their understanding is. So they can certainly feel free to pop in. But on the Hill revitalization work, certainly, we've talked a little bit about that as we've been moving here. It focuses on ordinance really aimed on nuisance abatement, quality of life issues. They're already on our work plan as well. There's a whole host of work that can be carried, that is carried over from last year's not a five. So perhaps I'd more aptly say this is not just ongoing, but a carryover from what we had from last council. Things like, for example, and that's where I mentioned earlier, the renters' rights or tenants' rights work will probably be informed by this, which is where we're, we're probably going to form it in. The sticky on the second or the stars on the second one was, while we think we're doing the majority of looking expansively at a variety of things, bringing some sooner this year and continuing to expand that look into nuisance abatement, quality of life issues. There is, for example, on the suggestion that Tara gave us, there is, for example, like if we shift to a patrol based system instead of a complaint based system, that certainly is going to require a little bit more. that certainly is going to require a little bit more analysis, some personnel resourcing, particularly where police is right now, and also where our code compliance folks are right now in planning and development services. So if that particular thing about pursuing this new proactive model is a specific action item, then I think we need to know a little bit more about that to include it. But otherwise, in terms of moving on quality of life nuisance abatement and the whole kind of penumbra that will take some time, including building up a team really that is more robust, that we believe we have underway.
Thing one, vocabulary points for the day, go to Nurya for penumbra, thank you very much for that. Mark, first question to you on the sticky with the checkmark on ordinances to improve quality of life. Do you agree that as described by Nurya, that's underway?
Yes, I do, and the Hill revitalization working group is quite active on this and working with city staff. So yeah, I think this is something that is in process, and I look forward to it bringing some specific suggestions back to council.
Fantastic, thank you. So Tara, then coming to you, it sounds like the one item that maybe would be in addition to the work plan and require additional obligation is moving to patrol-based sort of management of complaints. Would you like to help us refine that and keep it on the list for prioritization, or what are your thoughts there?
Yeah, here's my thoughts. So one of the reasons why I feel passionately about this is because I do not, I think right now the community is combining occupancy with with nuisance. So for us to attack occupancy and do something great with it, I feel like we have to get the nuisance part of it under control. So right now, what I'm thinking is, and I did talk to Maris about it. So just so you know, she does agree with this, that right now if a police person, police person walks down the street and hears noise, they can't do anything about it. They're not going to go into the party and say, hey, bring your noise level down. It has to be the community that complains about it, it puts the onus on the community. They have to, they have to do a lot of work to put forth these complaints. They have to tape things, they have to write things down, it's a lot of work. And plus, they are worried about the people they're complaining about for there to be backlash, which has happened. So, so I feel like changing the way this is just would be better for everybody. I'm not, I don't know when or where or how, but I just think it's a good idea. And lastly, I just want to say, and I don't even know when to say it, is the whole fireworks thing for the Hill is really has gotten a lot worse according to the Hill, but according to Maris as well. So I would like there to be enhanced consequences for fireworks, because also we have a drought, and it's not just noise, it also has to do with fire. So those are the two points I want to bring up, and I don't know where and when, so I'll leave that to everybody.
Great. What I'd love to hear from, I'm not sure who, maybe Nurya, maybe Maris, to what is the nature of the action required to change to a patrol, to patrol-based nuisance abatement? Is that a policy change, a programmatic change, is it our ordinances? What's, what would need to be done to allow this to happen?
Nurya, if you want, I'll tackle this one.
Sure.
Yeah, I think what the community is asking for here is that when the police have probable cause to believe that a noise violation is occurring during certain times of the day, then the police can file an affidavit and issue a citation themselves and not rely on the community to do the same. And there is retaliation issues on the Hill, and the community feels very unsafe about doing that. So I think that clears up and helps the community in one aspect of the chronic nuisance that we continually see on the Hill, if that's helpful.
That's helpful. I guess my question still stands, though, what's the action required to make that happen? Is that just you, Maris, babbity boop it into action, or that's ordinance?
That would be a package of the noise ordinance changes that we would be requesting as part of this chronic nuisance study.
Oh, okay. So that's something that, would that be Nurya added into that package of nuisance abatement ordinance stuff that you already discussed?
Yep, I was just going to say, I think that's a little tuck in, right? It might elongate some of the work in terms of just how long, whatever analysis does. But again, the, and Maris, you'll ring in here, but if the ask is to look at how to best put more teeth, which I think we are looking at, to how do we enforce and what changes we have to make in order to have more teeth to our nuisance and quality of life code, codes that impact those, and that would to me include fireworks and so forth, that is an easy, and I say easy tuck in, but really part of what we're looking at right now. The question I'd have for you, Maris, is, as I read, and maybe Tara just getting some understanding, I also read in your potential solutions or suggestions is actually shifting over to a patrol-based model. And that would really mean additional staff and folks from Maris, unless, Maris, you tell me that that is not the case.
Well, it's complex right now because we're down so many officers. If we are up fully staffed at 190 where we should be, we have a really robust whole University Hill Impact Team. And so if we're fully staffed and we can get back to our numbers, then I fully believe that our staffing would meet the demands of the University Hill issues, especially if we change the noise ordinance and we get a really solid chronic nuisance ordinance that has a little bit more consequences than we have now. So I feel confident as we bolster our numbers, and hopefully we do in this next year, we'll be in good shape. Is that helpful, Nurya?
It is, and perhaps then what it is, is that then that can collapse, that star becomes a check. And what may happen is, as you are able to staff up, then that is perhaps a conversation to be had about about how, what that operation looks like, right?
That's, that's the way I see it, and I agree with Tara and other council members that these are real issues on the Hill, and so I want to support and do what I can to alleviate some of the pain on the Hill by the community members up there.
Okay. So I'll hear from Judy and then Tara, I'll come back to you and ask if you think it's already underway as described. Judy, go ahead.
Thank you. I just have a comment because I'm slightly confused by this, the discussion that we're having. You know, I support programming to alleviate the noise on the Hill, but I would not support this punitive enforcement model. I work with police officers all day, every day now with my day job, and I respect them, but I'm not sure having more police officers patrolling the Hill is the way to go. For instance, we have the ambassador model for downtown, can we also have that for the Hill? I mean, I've met Denver, actually, there's an ambassador named Denver, and I've met him, very, very nice person downtown, actually, last week. And maybe if we have a similar model, someone who just patrol, take notes, and maybe bring the information back and do some education, I would support that. But as far as just having police officers patrolling the Hill enforced, to me, I just don't see that. Thank you.
Nicole, love to hear it for you on this, and then Maris, I'll come back to you if you have any perspective on that. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to follow up on Judy's comments and just get a little bit of additional clarification here. Are we, are these all part of the same bundle of priorities that we're going to be looking at? Or are we talking about two separate things here? Because I also, you know, what, I really want to see more more people following some of the safety codes and things that we have in place. I also feel like there are different models for that that we could look at. And so I guess I'm not sure what it is that we're considering here as a priority. Is that sort of the complaint, the nuisance issue? Or is it the sort of increased patrolling or increased monitoring or some sort of intervention we're doing, or both?
I heard both and separately. And so coming back then to Tara, what I heard is the idea of making it easier for officers who see bad behavior to file a complaint. That was Maris's first point, that could be rolled into the code change bundle that was already discussed. Separate issue, though, of whether PD then sort of does more patrols of the Hill and other areas for patrol-based nuisance response. So based on what you've heard, Tara, what are you thinking now?
I must, I think you guys are misunderstanding. I don't think we need to have more police on the Hill. I just say, when the police are walking around the Hill and they hear a lot of noise, they should be allowed to ticket the person. Right now, Maris, am I wrong? They can't unless there's a complaint from somebody on the, from a community member. Can you explain that one?
Yeah, this, I don't want to overcomplicate this. During certain times of the day, we need a complaint from a community member to enforce the loud noise ordinance that we have on the books. So we'll need an ordinance change to alleviate the community's concern of backlash or retaliation, which is a real issue on the Hill. I'm not advocating for more police on the Hill, I want to be clear about that. I think we have the proper staffing to do that, especially if we have a new chronic nuisance ordinance, which addresses some of these issues that I've been hearing about since I've been here. So I want to be clear about that, we need a noise ordinance change. And then we need a chronic nuisance ordinance refresh. So I'm not advocating for more police, I'm advocating for that if the police officer is called to an area over loud noise, I do not want to put the responsibility of the community member to file the affidavit to issue a citation or be a witness in court. That has been something I've heard from the community since I've been here. And I think the council members that are part of this working group on the Hill can attest to that as well.
And so just again, just to make sure I understand, that issue that you've just identified, that is and can be part of the nuisance abatement code change that are already on the books or on the to-do list?
They're already on the to-do list, yes.
Great. Rachel, last thought on this, and then I'd sure love to move on.
Yeah, I think Maris pretty much made my point, but it's, as somebody who's been involved in that group, we have also looked at things like moving to a code officer who's dedicated, or code enforcement who's dedicated out there, which wouldn't even have to be part of the police department and other options. And again, for today, I think our goal is just, do we want to keep moving this work forward and keep it on the work plan? And I would suggest here, again, it would be helpful probably to have a study session sooner than later so that we're all on the same page and know what we're going for as part of this. Thanks.
Thanks. So Tara, it sounds like, as you've described and understood the problem, it can be added to existing work plan item, and we don't need to prioritize it. You're cool? All right, fantastic. Then, moving on to our next topic here. This one was sort of two items that we've categorized together as living wage. Nurya, neither one of these got a green checkity-checkety for being underway or a dot-dot-dot for being kind of underway. So want to come to these, to the proposers of the things, to see if you want to say anything else or further refine your item so I can get it onto the prioritization list. Nicole, you suggested a ballot measure to pay councils and board and commission members. Now that we've talked about the election commission, do you want to hold on that piece and ask those folks to get to tackle it? Is it a freestanding item? What are your thoughts on this one right now?
Yeah, it seems like it is something that could fall within the election commission. Where I hesitated a little bit is that we were talking about the election commission kind of not starting any work until 2024. And I think that this is something that we need to start, this discussion of council pay needs to start before the next batch of folks decide to run for council, so that they kind of know where that's going. Because as it is, we are excluding a lot of people in our community from being able to take this position if they don't have sort of a source of income that allows them to spend 30-ish hours a week on council work. And I think the same is true for board and commission kinds of things. So I think, yes, it could be incorporated, and the 2024 timeline for that is not super satisfying in thinking about council pay.
Okay, so given that it's your item, do you have a suggestion? You want me to put it on the list of prioritize to expedite it in some way? Or you want to have it added to Samuel's notes for the election commission to tackle maybe early on?
Yeah, I'm thinking just adding to kind of the election commission, and I would be interested in hearing that. And Judy, if that, you know, feels like it's going to bump out any other things that were a part of that election commission, if we were to kind of have that be the, one of the top tier priorities of an election commission.
Okay, before I go to new hands that are up, a little shout out to Judy or Matt, any thoughts on this question?
I think that's a great idea, Nicole. I think that's the right way of looking at the issue.
Okay, Matt?
Too many issues, I mean, that's certainly, on an expeditious front, the Charter and Elections Committee can also, you know, take that up in any intervening time before the, you know, commission is up and running. So I think there's a few avenues in which that can be addressed rather quickly.
Fantastic. And we can also sort some of these items again until have the Charter Commission decide which ones are for them and which ones to punt to the election commission when it's ready. Rachel, thoughts on this one?
Just that that is what the blue ribbon panel is already supposed to be looking at. So I don't know where that's going to fit in and how things are going to slide together, but it feels like we sat on that for a year. So I guess this is just the staff, like, we should, we should get an update on why that didn't start, where it can go and where that process is. I would have thought at least we had invited some people to be part of that blue ribbon panel. So I think this is almost, this should be started yesterday, to be honest.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, I'll agree with Rachel, although I do want to make a distinction. I think that what Nicole and others have proposed is really two different things. One is council compensation, and one is whether there should be compensation for boards and commissions. I think the council compensation, when we already decided last spring, we should have a blue ribbon commission, we should get that up and running so that that could potentially be put on the ballot this year. And to Nicole's point, we need to put it on the ballot this year so that people who might run in 2023 know that they might, or may not be paid. So I think that is very time sensitive. I think the question about whether boards and commissions should be paid and how much this should be paid, and whether there should be difference between boards and commissions, I think that's actually a pretty heavy lift. And I think that's a separate discussion from council compensation. It could be the same blue ribbon commission, but I would suggest that if it is the same blue ribbon commission, that they break their work up into council compensation starting in 2023 versus boarding commission stuff, which I think is going to take a lot more work and be a little bit lengthier process.
Okay. Nurya, what do you know about the old blue ribbon commission, and could it tackle these things?
I don't know much about the blue ribbon commission, and actually was just going to ask a question of council or seeing if anybody on staff recalls, but my understanding is that that was a recommendation by a council committee in March of last year, and wondered if the entire council had voted on that to move that forward. And you all would know best than I can, so we can go, so I can go back and take a look at where that is.
Rachel, do you recall?
I was pretty sure we discussed it at the last retreat, and then maybe what the retreat did was kick it over to the boards and commit to the Charter Committee, who maybe kicked it back saying, let's do the blue ribbon. I don't remember for sure, but I think it was on a retreat check-in list as a result of discussions that had happened over the previous year. And just wanted to weigh in, then I had talked to your predecessor, Nurya, about pay for boards and commissions, and even just things like free rec center passes and bus passes and some of the perks. And she had a concern about sort of, I guess, elevating some volunteers in the city over others. So she was saying, like, we have a lot of people who volunteer for open space projects and things like that. And are you going to pay everyone who volunteers for the city equitably? Otherwise, she saw a problem with that, so I just.
Common conversation, yeah, got it. Bob, you have a different memory, and also Samuel's here, and he wrote the notes from the last retreat, so we could ask him to do a little research at the break.
I think I have a similar memory as Rachel's. I think it was briefly discussed about the council retreat last year, and I think it was kicked over to the Charter Committee, which then the Charter Committee, that was January, Charter Committee met in March and said, golly gee gosh, this is, we've tried this three times with the voters, as a council initiative, it's always failed. Maybe we should put together a committee, it should be some former council members, it should be, who know what the work is, we should do some comparables to other cities. We should perhaps have people on the committee who thought about running for council, but didn't because of the low pay. And so we talked about that, but to be fair to staff, I don't want to be too grumpy with staff about why it hasn't started yet. I think we did talk last spring about launching that committee right around the beginning of this year, so I think we're right at it. So I don't think that we're behind schedule. I think we kind of charted that out, thinking that would take two or three months for that committee to do its work. They'd bake a recommendation in spring or early summer in time for council to vote, put it on the ballot. So I think we're on schedule, I think it's okay. I think we just need to get going on forming that committee, and I do think that's a separate exercise about then boards and commissions, which I think is maybe a newer thing and probably a more complicated thing.
Okay.
I'm just going to add one more thing to my memory, which is that Adam Swetlik was like, oh, that, you know, after he was decided not to run again, was like, maybe that would be a good place to plug in is on that commission. So somehow all of council did hear about it and sort of weigh in on it, I believe, because Adam made that comment.
All right, I'll dig in on it, too. I mean, I've been here since the beginning of
All right, I'll dig in on it, too. I mean, I've been here since the beginning of May and I haven't heard it since then. So it was right before then, and I'll just sort of figure out to. Look back and see. What do we need to do to to move that forward?
And appreciating that they're. Different topics and therefore different levels of lift, but can we put both council pay and board and commission pay on that groups to do to noodle list? Nuriya, is that cool?
For the work prioritization that we're going to have later on with the elections, I imagine.
I I'm talking about just can these two items, maybe it's a different question. The blue ribbon commission can talk about council pay and boards and commission pay. Yes? Do we need to have council prioritize the blue ribbon commission as part of the other things, or is that something that as folks have said, it was already sort of. Expected to be done and doesn't need to be prioritized?
I am hearing from staff that it was actually never put to the entire council for a vote. But certainly we can. It seems that there is concurrence, but with this council, we should probably think about it because if it wasn't voted by the entire council, then we should. Figure out how to prioritize and then move that forward.
So I should put it on the list? Okay, Rachel?
I just wonder if we want to have like. I might not want to spend time researching boards and commission pay this time. So could we have those as two separate? Or options in case some people do want to say, yes, let's move forward with the blue ribbon commission, but I'd really want to learn more before I said. Yes, to having some volunteers for the city paid.
Okay. These came from Nicole, so I'll come back to her if she's cool with having those separate. Tara, last thought on this one?
Yeah, just quickly, I'm going to agree with Rachel on that. I definitely think they should be two separate things. Thanks, Rachel.
Lovely. Okay, thank you. So Nicole, the suggestion is I'll put two items on the prioritization list. One is. Go ahead and stand up that blue ribbon commission to talk about such things, and then a separate one is consideration of pay for boards and commissions.
Yeah, except I was just wondering whether the council pay issue fits into the election commission.
Yeah, I assume that it has.
And that 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 is, so basically we're equating the election commission with the blue ribbon.
Group. That's a great question. I assume they were separate. Nuriya, how did you understand it? That election commission. Different conversation than blue ribbon commission, or now do we just have too many commissions?
Well, now it seems like we have a lot of commissions, and if we're going to move forward with the blue ribbon commission, again, it's a scoping issue, right? Having not been here to hear the conversation of what that blue ribbon. Commission was going to do other than taking a quick look at notes in March and. Hearing from staff that that wasn't put forward to a full council vote. Then I wonder if that's a conversation to have like that could be the commission. How do we fold it in as we move forward?
What's your, what's your gut, Nicole?
Yeah, well, I mean. It seems like we've got some overlap, right? And this blue ribbon commission that we don't quite have a full understanding of and the. The election commission that that we're talking about, right? I think. Overarching everything is that we really want to look at, you know, what else we can do to strengthen our democracy, to allow more people to participate in it, right? And so. If if they can, if the blue ribbon commission and, you know, Matt and Junie, I'll let you chime in here, too. If that could be the election commission, then it seems like we might not need those different ones. But as to the question of separating council pay and board and commission. Pay, cool with that. We can. That's that's fine. I just if we can have just two different things versus three, that feels like it might be clearer for folks to decide on.
Junie? Matt, thoughts on that one? Blue, can the blue ribbon commission? Their task become also the task of the election commission?
So for one, I saw them as two different things because the blue ribbon had a singular task. And a very specific timeline. Whereas the election commission is existing more in at least. In the long term, in perpetuity to be a more long and broader scoping work, and therefore the skill set for that commission, the election commission would be. Wholly different than that of one that seemed to be set up for the blue ribbon. Which, as I heard, was described as maybe some former council members, those that had some experience not deciding to run because of pay. And so I don't know if that group would then thus be equipped with the experience and knowledge base to then handle the other stuff. So. I saw them as different. This one seems to be finite. It's going to do a thing, make its recommendation and be dissolved here pretty quick. Then be more formative on that broader skill set of folks for an election commission, which require voting experts and and a much broader, more election based suite of skills.
Cool. Thank you. That's helpful. Junie?
Yeah, I agree with Matt. That's exactly what I was going to say. And. The blue, again, the blue ribbon commission is finite. It's internal as well. It's internally facing. As opposed to. A commission, what we're thinking of is something that will bring different parts of the community together. So it's very different mechanism. And it's also geared toward a different group. The blue ribbons commission is geared toward just focusing on council. As its primary. How do I put it clientele or or patron? And I just think the commission is looking at the entire community.
Okay, as a clientele. So what I'm hearing then is we'll add two new items to our prioritization list. One is. Blue ribbon commission on council pay, and then separate one is consideration of pay for boards and commissions. Does that sound fair, Nicole?
And then there's also election commission, and I think.
Already on the list.
Yeah, and so I think the only thing I want to clarify is that. These two feel still feel similar to me, right? I recognize the differences for sure between the election commission, the blue ribbon commission. So I guess my question is. If, you know, folks are kind of prioritizing these items, if council pay does not end up. In that, you know, top priority list and election commission does. Is that is council pay something that the election commission can include looking at, or does this mean we're not going to, you know, look at council pay?
Matt, did you have a thought on that?
Yeah, I. Man, let me see if I can. I'm not sure I understand the confusion of that Nicole, and so maybe let me try to understand. And so maybe I might ask a question. If the. Election commission isn't established until we say we're going to make it, but it doesn't really start till 2024. It almost seems like it's a moot point on whether or not we make any actions on putting council pay on the ballot for this year, because then. The blue ribbon is done and that matter is done. So I'm not. I'm not, I don't know where the, I'm not sure how they are seemingly overlapped other than. If we don't talk about council pay now with this blue ribbon and it doesn't get addressed, it just spills over to a conversation the election commission may take up at a future date. That so I'm, I'm not sure where the spillover is because temporarily one will be done this year and the others won't start for another. Two years. So am I understand? So I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just trying to think about as people are, you know, making their priorities. Where things would fit in, what there's time for. Anyway, I think I'm just going to confuse the issue a little bit more. I think I am the main one who's confused here, but it sounds like. We'll have a priority for a blue ribbon commission to look at council pay that will be, you know, on our list of things to consider prioritizing for this year. Also will be an election commission that would start in 2024 that would look at a more broader set of issues.
And now just to finish, I mean, this was to Aaron's point earlier that we don't have to decide that since it's legislated, we don't have to decide the election commission now. We could decide it. The day after the election, right? In which case we just don't let any staff resources get mixed or worry about. A- any issues there. So we can stagger this to have the least amount of impact on staffing. In that capacity, at least that's the way I understand it. And Aaron's point, I think, was spot on there. So I hope that kind of maybe alleviates a little bit of where there might be overlap or having to choose one versus the other. I don't think we do, to be honest.
Thanks, Matt. Nuriya, do you have any additional thoughts on that?
Well, I didn't want to further confuse the issue, but I just wanted to mention that I know that staff is working already on whether from a. Ratio equity focus on. Board and commission pay, and that's going to come later as part of some. Possible thoughts or recommendations in the future, so I might take that one even out of the equation. And because it is something that's already being contemplated by staff as they're thinking about it.
And I would be comfortable with that, is, you know, if it's something that's already being looked at.
So the only addition, the only new addition for prioritization is the blue ribbon commission on council pay. Okay.
If we figure out what the blue ribbon commission is, yes.
All right, so just our last item then on on our living wage topic. Junie, you had just talked about increasing the minimum wage for residents. Staff had said they didn't see that there was a staff. Component at this time, wanted to double check what your thinking is on that before we file it in the right spot.
No, no, thank you for that. And just so you know. This issue was brought forward back, I believe in 2019 by council member Adam Swetlik. So. All credit goes to him, but I have been working with my fellow council member or mayor. Aaron Brockett, and I think Aaron would be the best person to talk about some of the. Discussion that we've been having around the issue. Aaron? Do you want to take it from here and explain a little bit about some of the discussion we've been having around the county?
Or Junie, and appreciate very much you raising this issue on your retreat priority list. So there's, there are some great discussions going on with the county commissioners as well as with city councillors and other cities around the area. And there's an impressive array of cities and counties that are interested in participating in a regional minimum wage increase. So. The idea, I think, in Boulder County is to run that process through the Boulder County Consortium of Cities. And Lauren is our very capable representative to that body. So as I understand it, they're planning on taking that up in their agenda in the early part of this year and. Where the county would lead that effort and they would work on crafting an intergovernmental agreement or something similar. Where every city that was interested in participating could sign on to that. So I think we don't need this on our work plan right now because the county is really going to be doing all the lifting on the coordination on this effort. But what I'm really hoping is that we can get a knot of five or or seven or nine or whatever to to. Show that we are interested in participating in this process so that we can then. Commission Lauren to go represent the council and work on this with the consortium, knowing that she has the backing of council on this issue.
Thank you, Aaron. And I think maybe one more thing that I just wanted to add as well is possibly coming before council or asking council members. Singularly and individually to sign on to a letter of support for the minimum wage.
Okay, and that's something, Junie, then that you would sort of tackle offline, and we don't need to add anything to our council prioritization. Conversation today. Is that correct?
So here's my understanding. I had a. The opportunity to chat with Teresa. And I did mention that, hey, I don't know. I don't think we would need that, but she. I don't know if she's here. She would like to chime in, but she wanted to be aware of what's going on if ever we needed any type of support. So. Teresa, you here? I don't know what's your thought on that?
About whether it needs to be added to the work plan or not?
Yes, yes.
I don't believe it needs to be added to the work plan. I think you can just keep us updated, but certainly if someone has a different thought on that. Happy to hear it.
Not seeing anyone else volunteering other thoughts on that. So. Junie will look for offline community level action on that and. Hope to hear updates should you have them.
Thank you.
If I could just add in, Lauren, do you mind just chiming in since you'd be our representative here? Are you comfortable carrying that flag there in the consortium?
Yes, that's one of the reasons I was excited to join the consortium, so I'm excited to help bring that forward for our community.
Fantastic.
With the support of. Yeah, so I guess my my main question would be, and we can touch base on this offline, but like. If we have a knot of five at a future meeting or, you know. Aaron and Junie, let's continue having a conversation about how we make sure that that. We get buy in and all of that.
Good, good. And to be clear, this is, you know, commissioning you to work on it with our partners, you know, any. Decision on actually enacting one would would come later on after the collaborative work with them with our partners.
Absolutely.
So Aaron, getting Lauren a notified to raise that with the consortium, is that something you would do at a regular business meeting?
As a process question, maybe this is a Teresa question. I know this is the, I know at some retreats, we've given some direction on an item. Do we? Do we do that? Is that something we can kind of nod about here, or do we need to bring that back for a separate? Discussion?
I I'm here and I hear your question. I'm thinking. I think to set official. For official buy in, you really want to do that at a meeting. And I even, I even might say that it could rise to the level of a vote.
Great. Why don't we take that up at CAC then?
Thank you for that. Junie?
Yeah, I just need needed some clarification as well because this issue is coming. To the consortium in February, then let's say. They've decided to move forward with it. Would that be a problem, the fact that it's not on a work plan? For us to do any work?
Right.
That process. Do you see what I mean?
Yep, Nuriya?
I do, and I, and when it first came up, and I appreciate. Junie, you were saying right now, I just want awareness, right? Because we don't know exactly what that's going to be. I imagine. And and you and Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, I imagine just participating in the consortium and seeing where we are is really going to be something for. Elected as you move forward. I think at some point, when it gets to the point that there is, and this will take time, I imagine, when it gets to the point that. That it is time for either engagement in community. Or the writing of a potential ordinance, and Lord knows I led that in Minneapolis. So it's a lot. That when it comes to that point, we'll be thinking about what that lift is, and we'll have to have a different conversation. But at the moment, we don't know timing and we don't know. What that could look like. So I would posit that until you do, maybe that doesn't have to be on the work plan, but we would come back with a. With a knot of five if you get to the point within this term to move that forward would be my estimation. You could put it on the work plan now, just with the knowledge that nothing will happen from staff's point until it comes to the time that. Staff needs to work on it if you want to signal that priority, but at the moment, I think it's too early.
Aaron?
Sorry, go ahead, Junie. No, Aaron, I was going to punt it to Aaron.
Okay, thanks. That was really helpful, Nuriya. And and I think that that Lauren just engaging in discussions at the consortium is something that's doable just in her regular work. As our representative consortium. And so. But we'll talk at CAC about next steps, but I think my understanding would be that Lauren's. Is empowered to have those discussions at the February meeting already.
Great. Thanks, Aaron. Junie, thanks for this one. I'm prepared to move on. Yes? All right. Counsel, I just want to catch you up on where we are on our. Agenda. So we have a couple of more items that are that we sort of need to understand. What your vision is and get them on the prioritization list as a very defined and discrete action. Those topics are at a minimum. Resiliency against disaster, community resilience, and the Boulder Airport. Then there are some down here that maybe are satisfactorily underway and maybe not, and we'll need to discuss those. I think we can get through that pretty quickly, as long as those of you who have items. Particularly on this list are pretty clear on what you think the discrete ask is. It is 10:08. I'd like to give you a chance to go stretch your legs. I still always want to be better than Aaron, so but I can't give you 10 because we just don't have it right now, but I'm going to give you seven. So go now and then come back at 10:15 and we're going to get after these remaining items. Thank you so much for a fantastic conversation so far today. It's really going swimmingly. I'm delighted with your discussion. Okay, go to the things. I had to settle. Right, quick kettle warm up and then the old, the old instant, but I did froth my milk because I'm a bit of a coffee diva. All right, Matt, are you back? Thank you. Junie, are you back? There you are. Hello, and there's, okay. All right, we're good. All right. Friends, if you're beginning to panic, I would encourage you not to do so. I think it's going to be fine, but as we carry on with these conversations. Where we do need to get for the remaining items is simply a clarification of what is the ask or action, so we can get it on our prioritization list. Some of those more controversial items, I did want to give you a fair amount of. Space to discuss again to determine whether you wanted to prioritize them. For the remaining ones, I'm not sure there's quite so much controversy, so I'll encourage you just to be real clear. On what the action item is, let's get it on the list if that's where it needs to go, and then we can get you to the discussion. All right, with that being said, our next topic. Is resiliency against disaster. And Nuriya, coming to you first, we had. Two items, one from Tara and one from Rachel. That you sort of starred as kind of underway. Do you want to talk about what kind of kind of that is?
Yeah, and I will tag Mike so that he's on deck as we talk about it. I think that first one. In talking to staff, we can probably put a check mark against it. There is a whole litany of things that are happening. With wildfire resiliency as we move forward. The second one is the one that I'll say that there are aspects of it that are going forward, early. Warning systems, but as I read Rachel's. Sort of requests, there are aspects of it, and maybe I can also just call on David Geer to also be on deck. That I don't know that are going on that would be additional work, like really looking particularly at the built environment. I think the things that we're doing in our natural environment are. I think the things that we're doing in our natural environment are ongoing and frankly, the Office of Disaster Management has a lot of work and learnings from the fires that we will be moving forward and certainly will be sharing with council and community as we go, as we learn more about those debriefings. But um, to Rachel's point is also looking at, I believe when we were first hearing of her request was looking at like building codes and construction codes and the materials that we're using for our buildings that we saw so much devastation in houses and structures in the Marshall Fire. And that may require us to look against what is permissible with current building codes and whatnot. So maybe that's a question first, Rachel, that did I understand that right? And then, uh, Mike and David can weigh in on the, on that.
Yeah, so I do talk to Chief Calderazzo a bit about this. Um, and I think what we came up with was possible work plan lift to around fires. Hire consultants to research and recommend changes to code to require defensible spaces for homes in the wildland urban interface. And possibly broader code changes to homes further east and outside of that interface zone. And then to, to do some check-ins around the emergency warning system, including ensuring that people near but not in the impacted area receive, receive alerts too. Um, because it, it sounds like maybe on the, the warning alert system now, they haven't quite conceptualized that like, you might live on the edge and we talked about the example of my house right on, right on literally, you know, the street where the mandatory evacuation ended for the fire and we didn't know not to, you know, not to drive towards Costco like at the time that they were preparing to evacuate there. So maybe broadening and just checking in with council on that. And then there is a second part of mine, which is, you know, fire and floods. So on the floods to ensure that South Boulder Creek flood mitigation work continues on the work plan. And so maybe the work plan could just include quarterly updates on progress.
Okay. Mike, did you need to add anything around that? And again, it would help me if y'all could just frame in what's the language I'm putting on my list for prioritization. Mike, what are you hearing?
Sure. Good morning, Council. Mike Calderazzo again for the record, Fire Chief. I, it was summed up pretty well. A lot of stuff is in process. Excellent points about notification procedures. So I think if there's anything for council to, to consider, I don't have necessarily the bandwidth, and I know this crosses a couple of different departments, for researching all the different hardening options for the community to include things that might be available to help homeowners. Um, whether that's from risk, insurance companies or whatever, whatever money's out there to help. I, I simply don't have that capacity to look those things up, see what other communities are doing and bring that home to Boulder and make even unique recommendations for council to, to debate and have policy issues, conversations around. So, so that would be the one piece to this is bringing somebody on board to be able to, to focus and provide council with um, any policy, policy related recommendations as well as options for what the community may be, be able to take advantage of in terms of funding. So that's, that's it. Everything else I would say on those two bullets or two tabs are in various states of completion. To include, and I know Dan Burke from Open Space can comment on this. Um, we even have in our master plan, um, goals around hardening the community already. Um, but if not well coordinated with open space lands that we own, well, then there's, there's a set of property that it's not protecting itself versus our homeowners who are doing an excellent job. So we want to be consistent um, both ways. And I know that's, that's an ongoing conversation with open space so we can coordinate as one city um, on that front. But that's, that's what we're trying to do internally. And I just want to highlight that as an example of things that are already um, in process for council.
Okay. So I, I wonder too, and I want to give Joe Taduichi an opportunity to share, uh, given uh, Rachel's thought about making sure that we keep flood mitigation and protection as well. But I wonder if perhaps the work plan item is something around providing a comprehensive citywide plan on resiliency against disasters um, to include the hardening of infrastructure and um, focus on fire and flood mitigation. Anyway, we can, we can work that out, but it is perhaps bringing all those pieces that city staff is doing, perhaps some in concert and some individually to bring it forward. And that would include flood and fire and, um, uh, bringing those updates and a plan to council, if you will. Joe?
Thanks for that. And good morning, council members. Joe Taduichi, Director of Utilities. And I'd be happy to come to council and do some quarterly updates on the project. This year, we're really gonna kind of have our heads down working on the design and permitting. And there really won't be any decisions for council to make in 2022. The big thing that will be coming up, uh, because part of the project is on city open space will be in, in 2023. We'll have to go through the disposal process, which sometimes comes up on our utilities projects. So in any event, happy to do the updates.
Thanks, Joe. So Rachel, um, how do you feel about Nurya's suggestion that the item to be prioritized is the comprehensive citywide plan for resiliency against disaster, particularly fire and flood?
Yeah, I, I mean, that, that's similar to what, how I was framing it. So certainly supportive. Um, I want to make sure that Tara's ask was captured too. And then I had one other, the only other piece of mind that, that we haven't touched on anywhere else in the retreat was sort of the, the rest of the resiliency in terms of, of, you know, just broader climate prices. So these are, these are like small things that I think are, are part of our climate mobilization action plan, but just wanted to check in around them. Like we've heard a lot about banning gas-powered lawn equipment and eliminating natural gas hookups in new builds and things like that. So want to clarify, is that in the works already if we don't specifically add it to the work plan?
I love that because I was just being reminded by staff as we're having the conversation to lift up some of the work, some of the conversations we're already having about a comprehensive, um, sort of plan along resilience that really focuses perhaps on climate resilience. And I know that Dan and Jonathan have talked and it's already in our work plan to talk a little bit more about uh, climate justice and resiliency generally. It is a topic that, that is cross-cutting around multiple departments. And so we have that currently on our work plan and we'll be continuing to have those conversations with you.
And so can we expect that like there may be an ordinance coming that would do something on the, the gas power? You know, leaf blowers and things like that without us taking an affirmative step today, is that likely to?
I will, I, I don't know the specifics of the work. And so maybe I'll ask Jonathan to pop up and see if that is something that we can say is contemplated and we will talk about it in a bit. And I'm seeing a message that it is on the work plan, but Jonathan, if you're around and want to pop up, you can share for yourself.
Oh, I'm happy to pop up. Thank you. Good morning, Council. Jonathan Cohen with Climate Initiatives. Yeah. Rachel, thanks for the question. Obviously this is a topic that I think has come up at a number of instances from our community. And I would just want to, I guess, get a sense from council. I, I think our intention is to fold this in, just to kind of continue to use that, that terminology this morning uh, into some broader conversation around electrification, really what problem we're trying to solve. Is it really the nuisance issue? And so we're having ongoing conversations and I just wanted to reflect that, you know, there is a capacity issue because we do want to approach this from um, a cross-cutting approach as Nurya said. So I think it has implications to many different departments. So I would expect, I, I don't know that I want to promise that it's going to be an ordinance, but there's going to be some movement on it this year. And we just need to land on the, the interdepartmental team on how we want to bring this forward. And then what are the other parts and pieces that are going to travel along with it?
Thanks, Jonathan. Okay. So Rachel, coming back to, oh no, you're good. Okay, Bob?
Yeah, um, so thanks for that, Jonathan. Thanks for that, Nurya. Um, we have a number of, I, I want to focus on just one narrow part of this. I know it's much, much broader topic and that's gas powered leak lowers. We've heard it from dozens and dozens of community members about that. There's obviously an equity piece to that too. It's not as simple as just banning them. And I know it's a link, going to be a lengthy discussion. There's a lot of equity issues around that. Um, I intentionally did not put that on my work plan list because I understood from staff that was already on their work plan. So if it's not on their work plan, I would add a sixth item, if it really is on your work plan, regardless of what that is, what that looks like. Then I, I, I kind of relied upon that and others may have relied on that as well. Cause we've heard that from staff many, many times in response to community member requests that don't raise on our work plan. So I, I relied on that.
Is it on the work plan?
It is on the work plan. We have certainly heard a lot from community on leaf blowers as well.
Thanks, Bob. Erin?
Yeah, Jonathan, thanks for, for joining us here. And I just wanted to put another thing, Rachel mentioned about natural gas hookups as well. I, I understand that we're tackling our building code revisions later this year that will be implemented in 2023. And that's already in flight, right? And we'll have the opportunity to evaluate a lot of different options for moving our building codes and electrification and such forward. Do I have that correct?
Yeah, Mayor, thanks for that. And, and I would invite David Gere to weigh in on this as well. He and I have had conversations about um, what parts will travel along with the update to our energy codes. Obviously, we're, we're going to be doing a lot of that work in 2022, preparing for the 2023 update. Um, and so there, there is a lot that we can kind of again, travel with those updates around particular building related issues. Uh, and so yes, Mayor, as you and I have also discussed, I think this is a really important opportunity to, to really accelerate some of our work around climate, around electrification. Um, so it is going to be a big part of our work plan in 2022.
Great. Thanks for claiming that. I look forward to it because it's going to be an opportunity to really move forward on some of our climate related goals. And so even though that's not going to be end up on our priority list, just for the community to know, that's going to be a big opportunity to move forward in a significant way on a lot of our goals. Thanks.
Thanks, Aaron. Bob, is your hand up again or still? Okay. All right. So coming back then, I did add to the prioritization list, um, the comprehensive plan for resiliency. And then, I, I see your hands. Just one second, Lauren. Tara, I wanted to see if you're agreeing with the assessment that, that your item here um, is already on the work plan. Cool. Okay. Um, Lauren, last thought, and then I'm going to move on to my next topic.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify because we sort of talked about how a lot of, um, some of this could fit under the sort of resiliency plan or, you know, that's already in progress. And so I just wanted to clarify that having sort of the hardening of utilities for disaster preparation should be a separate work plan ask. Is that?
Yeah. Does that need to be separate? I'm, I'm, I'm asking as well. Who, who answers that question, Nurya? Is that a separate item?
Could you repeat it, uh, Lauren? Cause I think I got lost in that.
So, um, we current, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is we currently have um, a resiliency effort underway that's pretty, you know, multi-departmental, a big work plan thing that's um, and some of this disaster preparedness seems like it fits under resiliency. So I'm just trying to clarify, should it be a separate work plan ask? Or does this mostly fit within what's, or could fit within what's currently being planned?
I, um, so I'll, I'll welcome staff if they want to differ from my perspective, but it seems two separate things. One is sort of a broader concept that I think staff had already been thinking about on the work plan about resiliency in general, and certainly some may touch on things that impact, but the resiliency against disaster is such a very specific thing about floods and, and mass fires and that potential for catastrophic um, failures in our infrastructure that that is kind of a, a thing unto itself. And that's why we really welcome that as part of a a plan because there are different people. For example, Office of Disaster Management may not be involved in the staff work we're doing as we're thinking about some of the climate issues, but they absolutely would be in this particular one about disasters. And I would posit that it should be a separate work plan item.
Thanks. Thanks, Lauren. Thanks, Nurya, for that clarification. All right. My next topic is community resiliency and um, Nicole, this one was yours. And looking back on my idea flip sticky here, it does not have a checkmark from staff or even a dot, dot, dot. We're kind of there. Um, so no version of this is underway. Want to know what you're thinking in terms of adding it as a potential prioritization item?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I think this feeds into the discussion that we just had about some of the physical infrastructure for community resilience and things like that. It really comes out of looking at the budget and talking to staff and other folks and realizing we don't necessarily have all the money that is needed to have, not just the physical infrastructure changes that we need to be having um, in response to the climate emergency, but also the social infrastructure changes that kind of need to be in place. And, you know, I think for me, this is a place where a lot of the community connector feedback came in as well. You know, they are, they're looking for, you know, better access to childcare, uh, to healthcare. I think this is stuff where um, the arts, uh, community really comes into play as well. All these things strengthen our community and our social infrastructure. And, um, social infrastructure correlates very strongly to outcomes for communities following weather disasters. So people are literally more likely to survive a severe weather disaster um, if they, uh, if they have stronger community of the social, stronger social infrastructure. So that's kind of where, where this is coming from. We don't have enough money to do everything we need to do. How can we go about getting more um, funding? And in particular, we have a, a lot of really large companies in Boulder that are making a lot of money off of being here. Um, and you know, is, is there a way that we can just recognize the contribution that our community is giving to businesses? And, um, the sort of way that, um, our, our workers maybe aren't being paid enough to, to live here and the drain that that's putting on our community's social infrastructure. So um, I have a couple of thoughts. I mean, we have so many priorities that are already out there. All of them are really important. For me, this one is one of those things that kind of like the planning reserve. If we don't start now, um, we are disadvantaging future councils and future work on this topic. We also talked a little bit about the Financial Strategies Committee and that sort of being, you know, an option for finding some additional uh, revenue sources for a city. So I guess my question as somebody who's relatively newer to council, I apologize for the three minute preamble. Um, my question is, is this something that the Financial Services Committee, or sorry, Financial Strategies Committee could take on? Is thinking about what are some additional funding mechanisms we may be able to find? Possibly, you know, with this per employee, beyond employers, possibly with other mechanisms that would fund some of the social infrastructure initiatives? Or is this something that really needs us to dedicate a work plan priority?
Bob, did you have a thought on that?
Yeah, for, I, I, I don't want to speak on behalf of the, the whole Financial Strategy Committee. I think the short answer to your question, Nicole, is yes, Financial Strategy Committee could take this up. I, I do want to reflect on the fact, and Erin will know this, that we have talked about a head tax, which is a tax on employers and employees in Boulder for many, many years. Matter of fact, the 2016 council priority list that I read earlier this morning included that. This was a, 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 a very big, uh, issue for, for Matt, or former Mayor Matt Applebaum. It's certainly something we could talk about again. I, I would only observe, because I know that your proposal was, was perhaps limited to publicly traded businesses in, in Boulder. That does get a little complicated because, because, because what do you mean by that? Did mean publicly traded companies that are headquartered in Boulder that do business in Boulder? Cause like, you know, Johnson Johnson Band-Aids does business in Boulder. So I'm not, I'm sure where you do withdraw that line. Um, and so I think when we've talked about head tax before, we have talked about companies that, that are based in Boulder, whether they're publicly traded or not. And a head tax on, on, uh, by, per employee on, on those businesses, whether that's small aerospace or whether it's a really small mom and pop company that they have three employees. Carve out some exceptions, you know, for nonprofits, for government, for maybe the university. Some of, some which we may not be able to legally tax. It would of course have to go to the voters, um, no matter what. And so I guess, I guess that's certainly something this Financial Strategy Committee could take up. We could certainly have some interactions with the chamber. It would be a source of income. The problem, the, the reason why the head tax has not progressed before is because it was a tax in search of a purpose. And I think what you've done, which I want to compliment is you've identified the need and the purpose for the tax. Um, and, and now, now we can simply talk about what that might look like and, and how it might be implemented.
Nicole, you have any thoughts on that before I go to the other hands that are up?
Um, yes, just about the, you know, are we taxing Band-Aids? No, it, it really is. Yes, companies that, that are, you know, having, have space in Boulder are, you know, having workers here in Boulder are bringing workers from surrounding communities in.
Junie, thoughts?
Yeah, no, thank you. I think Bob inserted a lot of my thoughts in the comments I wanted to make. I think this is, this requires a robust discussion with community, the chamber. I think this is, this requires a robust discussion with community. The chamber should be involved because they represent businesses. The Financial Strategy Committee, of course, it'd be great to have our involvement to know what that would look like. But ultimately, I think the business community is the one that we need to do the outreach as well to get involved to know, okay, what do we mean by the type of businesses, small, big businesses? And I think if you look at the SBA and what small business means, you'll be very surprised how much money that a small business has to make and how many employers they have to have in order to be considered small, a medium sized and big businesses. So I think that's a robust conversation that would require some of the city departments to be involved, community vitality. So I welcome it. I think it's a worthwhile idea. And we need to have worthwhile discussions about it and get all the stakeholders that are involved in this particular arena in in a room to have this discussion.
Thanks, Judy. Rachel?
Um, thanks, Heather. I think I'm a little bit leery of this idea, just because from what I can tell, it has been tried and failed or tried and repealed in other cities. And it has been brought up to this council in the past as a way to say, let's make it harder to do business to kind of get people not to come to Boulder and that it just is not where I come from. I think we have to have a thriving business community. And and in my experience, I think like the companies that off the top of my head, I imagine were targeting with this sometimes in other ways are already contributing a lot to the community. So I don't know if a head tax is it's just going to be like, fine, then we're not going to give you the, you know, we're not going to donate to BBSD, that new school stuff. I think we'd have to know what if we're just taking off these big businesses that we're targeting in a way that they pull out, support other places. So it I think it's something that I would want more information on before I decided it was a good use of either the Financial Strategy Committee or staff time. So I don't know if there's a way to get it like, you know, ask whichever community members are advocating for this to to put together more information so that we could understand better, like what are the pros and cons and ripple effects long term of of taking that action? Because again, it just I'm I'm a little bit gun shy just from the way that it was brought up in the past, which sounds very different from today's ask, but that that the goal was sort of to make people not want to come to Boulder. And instead of then having to develop housing for people, we just wouldn't have the people. And that's just inconsistent with with my values. Thanks.
Thanks, Rachel. Mark?
I share some of Rachel's concerns, although I'm happy to have FSC take a look at this. But I think that look should be since staff has to do the work before FSC can can look at it. I think I would take as a first step, that sort of comparative analysis of where it's been done elsewhere, where it's been successful or regarded as successful, and where it is not. And, you know, that might be an initial way of getting our hands around the issue and seeing whether it might in fact be applicable here. I think we'd have to have a lot of input from community vitality, a lot of input from the chamber and other businesses. And again, definitional issues are going to be paramount here in terms of who might be subject to such a tax. So again, I do share a lot of Rachel's concerns, happy to take an initial look at it. But I think that that look should be kind of preliminary. Let's, let's see what other communities have done and whether this is going to be a workable concept for here based on how they did it, what kind of definitions they established, et cetera.
Thanks, Mark. Matt?
Thanks, Heather. And, you know, Nicole, I really to Bob's point, I appreciate you finally bringing the really the purpose to why we would be seeking a head tax. And Bob's points kind of spot on that there was sort of a tax in search of a reason in previous conversations. But I also want to really kind of echo Rachel and Mark's comments and just sort of draw a light that, you know, we already talked about some of the conditions or concerns about having a homeless tax. But then this would be maybe another one. And so I'm worried that we might be in sort of a tax addition here. And into one or the other. So there's some of those concerns. Also, just to remind, like, we are still in a very hard economic space. Our businesses small, medium, and generally large in our community are still generally hurting. And furthermore, like, a lot of these businesses, when they get in a facility, are paying the largest impact fees in the country. So there's also contribution and the business that they support through the sales tax and other revenues and contributions really support our community. And so I want to be cautious on thinking of this punitively to businesses on the assumption that that somehow their being in our community is a harm. And so I just, I think maybe some of our basic assumptions could be retweaked i- if at all there. But but I think there's some important pieces for us to think about in the context.
Thanks, Matt. Rachel?
It's a non-lord hand going down. Thank you. Bob?
Yeah, I want to say two things. First of all, by saying that the Financial Strategy Committee can look at this, I don't mean to say that I personally endorse it. I think I agree with Matt and Rachel that we need to be very, very careful about an additional tax on businesses that do employ a lot of our residents. I want to direct the net comment to staff. This has been talked about lots and lots and lots and lots of times. There's tons of memos out there. There's been tons of comparative work done on what other cities do and don't do, the impact and so on and so forth. So I'm not suggesting that this needs to be a work plan item or not. But if it is a work plan item, I would say to staff, especially those who joined us in the last year or two, there's a lot of memos to counsel on this. A lot of work's already been done. I'd suggest that as a first step, you simply dust off that work.
Okay. Aaron?
Yeah, I agree with that, Bob. And Nicole, very much agree with the need for additional funding for those priorities that you have there. But when we have looked at the head tax in the past, my memory is that there were some problems with how we were allowed to implement it. That is why we ultimately decided not to go with it. Like, all the other cities charge both the employee and the employer. And I'm not, it seems like maybe that might be a requirement of the enabling state statute. I don't 100% remember. And I think there is also really limited ability to target certain kinds of businesses is my memory as well. So I think getting those past memos would be really helpful kind of for a framing of how that might work. Because my memory is that there's some significant limiting restrictions around how you could enable such a thing, which is, I think, part of why we didn't move forward with a similar process proposal in the past.
So Nuri, hearing all of that, any suggestions for what, whether this is a prioritization item, how we should tackle it?
Well, I don't know that it's a, well, it's something that needs to be decided by council, right? On whether it's going to be a prioritization item. Because I wouldn't want to have staff move too far down the line, knowing that it feels a little divided amongst council colleagues at the moment. But I will say this, that A, we're keeping a running list of those very suggestions of dusting off some older memos, particularly for our newer members of council, but frankly, even for me, because I haven't seen the memos on the past. So we are, as we're going along in those items, whether it's on planning, planning reserve, or whether it's on this, we will be sending you all a packet to just share that. And if this were something that were to come up on the work plan, our suggestion might be to certainly look at it at FSC in consideration with all the other sort of tax or ballot initiatives as we're doing forward to move it there. But again, I'd be reluctant to sort of propose that before we know if there is will of council to go down in this direction. But certainly, we will be moving those memos to you. So there's some more history, both for myself as well as some of our newer folks on council, so that we can be coming to this from a broader sense of knowledge of our community as well.
Nicole, based on all of that conversation, how would you like to proceed?
Yeah, so it seems like the place maybe for a work plan priority for us to decide on would really be around exploring this this issue a little bit more. I absolutely hear some of my colleagues' concerns about how, you know, this has been used as a way to try to push businesses out of our community. That is not at all my intention with that. And, you know, to this idea about businesses and and what I'm talking about businesses, what I'm really talking about are kind of the larger corporations and things that have giant gaps between what they're paying their top level executives and what they're paying the workers who are sustaining those businesses. I'll just give a shout out to the King Supers workers who just ended their strike yesterday, you know, striking even just for a wage that that was enough to let them buy groceries in the stores where they work, right? These are national issues, but they're affecting us locally. And I think finding some ways to make up those gaps so that our workers are not having to go to food banks and things would be good. And I don't mean to say that the, you know, larger businesses are not being generous and giving to our schools and to our food banks and to our other nonprofits and things, but things like food and housing in schools, to me at least, should not be things that we have to donate for. They should be things that we have as a community prioritize and enable and facilitate for our community members. And so that's, that's kind of where this is coming from, right? People are struggling in housing, in living, in affording childcare and food and healthcare and all these basic things. How can we as a community support each other, particularly in a climate emergency as we move forward? So I think narrowing, right? Just a, maybe it's a committee, a group that can actually look at this and try to understand how can we make up for some of these gaps that we're seeing in the community? It may roll into the living wage, right? There may be other ways of getting at this, but fundamentally, the issue is that people are many people in our community don't have enough based on the jobs they have to meet the needs of living here.
So I still need someone to suggest a really specific task. Is it ask the Financial Who's He What's It Committee to start with this? Is it to have staff do some background research? Is it to stand up a small stakeholder group to consider options? I heard a couple versions, and I need one to put on my list.
I think stand up a stakeholder group to consider some options for funding resilience in our community.
Okay. Nuri, that if that was going to happen, that's obviously probably not underway and would need to be a new thing. Is that right?
That would need to be a new thing, yes.
All right, I will put it on the list. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, council for a good discussion. So the last of our probably new items, but I'm not really sure, is Boulder Airport. Mark, this was one that didn't get a checkity checkity from staff or a dot, dot, dot. So can you help us frame up what the ask is?
Sure. There are, there are several issues that are implicated with the airport. Obviously, we get lots of emails complaining about noise pollution. There's an issue of lead pollution, which is one of the reasons why San Jose made the decision that it did to decommission its airport. There's an equity issue because we have a manufactured home park that is adjacent to the airport. And so it's their children that will be most impacted by lead. And to the extent that we are concerned with creating affordable and middle income housing, this is 179 acres, which can accommodate 2, 3,000 units. And as we know, land costs in Boulder drives housing. So if you have land that we own, you can do much more in terms of creating the middle income housing we all desire. The ask here involves none of that, because this is a long term play as the North Boulder Planning Reserve is a long term play for the potential of creating new houses. Rachel and I submitted a number of questions to Nuria about the airport, and we are simply looking for staff to take a very preliminary look at the airport and the manner in which it could be decommissioned. It is not a land use decision. We're not asking for anyone to vote on decommissioning the airport. And subsequent to having this preliminary study done, we may decide to abandon the concept to accept the concept, to move in an entirely different direction. We're not going there at the moment. We simply want to understand how it is done. I have been informed that it is a largely consultant driven project. And on this one, I would say unleash the consultants. This would, you know, involve talking to people at San Jose, talking to aviation lawyers in Washington, just to understand. And that's, that's as far as we're attempting to go at this point. If there's some promise here and we think it's worthwhile, we can come back and have that more robust conversation later. We are not asking for anyone to vote on transformation of the airport into anything, simply to accommodate a preliminary study that will allow us to move forward in a reasonable and informed manner, ultimately, as to what we want to do.
Thank you. Rachel, question or comment on that?
I was gonna add a little bit more to what Mark said, since I was involved in lifting up the questions to staff and thought it might be helpful for others to hear the types of questions that we were asking, which are sort of under the umbrella of, is that the sort of best and highest use of that hundred or hundreds of acres of land that the city owns? So we wanted to know, for example, what would the costs be to sort of extricate ourselves from our obligations to, I think it's FAA, we were told that it's, you know, $10 billion, sort of, I'm exaggerating, but it was a lot of millions of dollars. And we wanted to drill down what the exact costs are and what's owed when? And is it all owed or is some of it, could we have sort of a hybrid model where we have shorter runways to achieve some of the results and take some of the land back? How much are we using it right now for emergency uses? So we hear a lot about the airport is is needed in the event of fires and things like that to take off from with with fire dousing agents. And there's a, there's a sort of a dearth of information or understanding around how much that's been used in the past, given that we have had examples of times when you would use an airport in that capacity? And does it require the whole length of the runway for that use? Sort of what are the legal barriers to to shutting down an airport or or minimizing the use and runways there? Is that about capture it, Mark?
Yes, it does. It's simply getting us to a higher state of knowledge than we have today. And ultimately, if we may or may not make a land use decision on it, but we can at least do so, understanding the capacities for changing the use, what it will cost, and how we would have to proceed. And that's really the essence of it.
Yeah, I think that's right. And then one more thing is we, it's our understanding that this is already supposed to be being done under pursuant to the last airport master plan. So we're also lifting up some work that we think is already supposed to be underway.
Okay. Nuri, this one didn't get a check, Mark. So whether it was intended to be underway or not, it is not currently underway. Is that correct?
It is not currently underway because I think that, and Erica can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the changes to the airport master plan was in 2024, perhaps. But no matter what, I actually just really appreciate, Mark, you, the the conciseness, the conversation we had over the summer couldn't be done there just because staff was involved in other things, but really looking at this from the point of a feasibility study and providing staff, providing council with more information that is about options and about consideration, I think is really excellent. We also think consultant time could be used. We've got some work going on at the airport, but believe that by Q2, towards the end of Q2, that could start already, in particular, because the consultant that is needed needs to have some complexity and some technical knowledge. I'd add to some of those questions to some of the potential impacts that current operations may have had on the land and what mitigation may need to happen in order to perhaps use that for another purpose, such as housing would be incorporated into that. So if this is a work plan item that is approved by council, we certainly have a path forward with consultancy expertise to move that on. And Erica, if I am mistaken in any of that, please correct me and set me right.
You nailed it in one. And it really is just an allocation of trying to identify the resources to hire the consultant.
I heard that S happen. I'll be in there. All right, Bob, and then Matt?
Thanks. So I don't know if this will end up on the council work plan, but I would assume that if it does. And Rachel started to address this, but I don't think completely. I assume that this would be more than just about what the cost or steps would be around decommissioning the airport. So council can make an informed decision. But I assume that it also would include what the airport is currently used for, because I think it's a lot more than emergency use, right? There's, I think there's probably a dozen things that the airport is used for. And I think in order for council to make an informed decision about the airport, I think we would also need to understand what the council, what the airport is currently used for, not just how it's, who would be decommissioned. So I would hope that that if this does end up in the work plan, it would be a pretty comprehensive look about what it is now and what it could be.
We anticipate that, yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome. Matt?
Thanks, Heather. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Aaron. Uh, thank you, Mark and Rachel for, as was sort of mentioned, really narrowing down the, the scope of this ask in the context of where this, you know, the emails we get with regards to the airport. And so I appreciate that. And I think I'll be, you know, maybe be clear and then ha, ha, with sort of where I've, I'm sort of settling, but also maybe a question for, for David. Is, you know, I, I'm okay with a preliminary study to kind of just get some nuts and bolts on what things will cost. But I do want to make sure and where it is, at least in my priorities is I would hate for any of that work or the support of the consultants themselves take away from the timing of the planning reserve and TVAP to Alpine Balsam and East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. And so my question for David is, can you do that sort of work at the airport while not jeopardizing or slowing down any of those four massive housing priorities that are clearly not just in the queue, but will actually come to fruition long before any decision is ever made or any house is built and repurposing the airport?
Well, I guess first of all, I'm, I'm speaking a little bit for Erica, but I, I do see, you know, from what I know about the airport and the kind of work that will need to be done to, to fulfill this work task, it is going to be, it's going to be all consultants. It's, you know, we're going to have to hire expertise to do that from everything, from environmental consultants. If we're going to look at, you know, the pollution status of the, of the property down to the, all the FAA covenants that you need to unwind if you're gonna, if you're gonna try to close the airport.
I could add to what David said, you know, whenever we had looked at it, we had looked through the lens that Mark and Rachel originally provided, and it was to look at how might we as opposed, and sort of rough costs, but doing the kind of environmental analysis and so forth would far exceed the dollar amount that we had provided to you for what that could take.
Junie and then Mark, help me finish this one up so we can move on, please.
I just have a question that may come across as a comment, I think as part of this discussion. For us to make that decision, I don't want it to be staff just go, you know, in, in a silo and just give us hypothetical reasons why this thing should stay open and why it shouldn't. But I would want to know from community members as well. People, I think you mentioned that, Mark, but the wider community, what, what do we really want? And also, you know, just thinking about, we had a pretty devastating fire. Just, you know, just like this month, right? This last month. And were their emergency, did this particular airport help us in any way? So I think we need to think about what are some of the real benefits of having this airport here? And if we were to, let's say, decommission it and use it for another purpose, would that purpose serve us better? So I, I think I, I would really want us to look at this very, very carefully, not just, you know, what's the word? Put or Tom on the scale for one or the other, but really give us the real reason as to why the other one would not work and also have this robust community discussion, because I think that's really important as well. Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, I think a couple of these suggestions are good, but they're preliminary. I, I don't think we would be looking at environmental remediation at this point, nor do I think we would be looking at the other benefits that the airport might have to the community. That's, that is a subject for a land use decision. That's not what we're asking for. We're asking for understanding of the mechanisms. If we ultimately go in that direction, how would we do it? And elements of the conversation that relate to the benefits of the airport versus maintaining the airport as is, we, we're not at that stage yet. We simply don't know what our potential is, and that's what we're asking to find out. That's all.
So Mark, what I have added to the prioritization list, check me if the language is not to your liking. I have preliminary study to give options for how to proceed with decommissioning the airport and associated cost estimates.
Period paragraph, yes.
Cool. All right. I would just say is also like a threshold, like whether it's possible, like, you know, we, we really don't know if it's financially or any other way feasible. So it's sort of just a gatekeeping, like, can we even look at, at possible changes? We don't know.
We don't know if it would take five years, 10 years or 30 years. We don't know.
Or a trillion dollars versus 10 million, like it's just the possibilities. We don't have to know.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Aaron and then Bob?
Yeah. So I mean, I, I appreciate Mark's point about the, to keep the scope limited, like not looking at the entire universe of possible environmental remediation, for example. So, because this is something that, that I could potentially support as, as long as it were relatively confined in scope and not too enormous of an endeavor for, for city staff from a cost and time perspective. The, the request that I would, I'd make though, Mark, to, to your point that you just made is that I, to me, it would be really important, if, if we're going to get this information about how you decommission it, to also have the raw facts about how we use it currently. And that doesn't have to be a huge amount of research. But, but to Junie's point, like I would, I would want to know in that report, oh FYI, we, we we've used it for this much firefighting stuff, this much emergency stuff. It, it was just an inventory. That can just be a page or two, but, but to me, I, I would, it would be really important for me to get that information as well as the, uh, what would it take to close it?
Aaron, if I could colloquy, that was one of the questions we asked. To what extent is the airport an asset in emergency situations? And that, that's a perfectly valid thing to, to get more information about. I would support that.
Thank, thanks for that. So as long as it does include that inventory of, of the benefits that it's currently providing, then and it's limited in scope, that seems like a potential thing to take on. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Bob?
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with, with, with Aaron, but I, I want to clarify maybe or push back a little bit on what Mark just said. I wouldn't limit it to emergency purposes. The airport's used for lots and lots of things. And I, I, I understand we're not going to get into a discussion about the benefits and the, the pros and cons of the airport. But we're, we're not having a discussion, for example, about whether we should close fire stations, or whether we should close libraries, or whether we should close rec centers. Because we, we all understand what those things do. I think we don't understand what the airport does. And I, and I agree with Aaron that, that any analysis, any analysis about, about what the costs and, and process, processes for closing the airport would, would need to help get us up to speed on what the airport does. Not just emergency use, but all the things the airport does. And I think that any analysis in the, in a vacuum about it's going to cost us this much to close the airport would be really unhelpful unless we all understood what in fact the airport does do.
I'm happy to include that. As I said, it's not a land use decision.
And just to add to that, if I may, we have contemplated, I think we understand really well. Based on our conversations, Mark and Rachel, we had on the summer, we think we, we get the scope of this. It really is including the, it would include some high-level conversations about or research on the impact, and that would be both the emergency use, what we use it for now, as well as jobs it brings to the city and sort of the economical, the economic benefit to the city. But then we'd also be looking at, you know, some of the other potentials and, and what perhaps additional uses that could be there. Just again, this is a, as I understand it, Mark, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I want to make sure staff has scoped adequately. It really is a high-level preliminary overview and feasibility of not just what is happening at the airport now, what possibly could happen. And we need more information if that is a, a path that council wants to go through. But also you've asked us to take a look at perhaps San Jose, and if there are other cities that have decommissioned and what considerations they have had. So I think we are narrowed in our scope and don't believe at this point necessarily that it requires a deep level of engagement because there is no decision yet to move or not move in, in a direction to decommission or not.
Exactly.
Fantastic. Thank you all very much for that item. So there are a couple of more items that maybe aren't on the work plan that I might have rounded up. So you'll have to check me as we go through this list. So the first item that I think staff indicated is already underway, that was a council priority, is staff hiring and retention.
My number one priority. No need to do anything else there.
Okay, so we won't add that one to the list. Fantastic. Oh, Aaron, you got a question or comment on that?
I, I just want to say that emphasize that Nurya, you have, I think, the full support of council in terms of hiring and retention and supporting our phenomenal staff who are overworked right now. So just want to give a big emphasis. Council's a hundred percent behind you, whatever you need to do.
Appreciate that.
And I'm watching a lot of nods going around on the council windows as well. Thanks for that, Aaron. Thumbs up and such. Okay, broadband. Bob, this was yours. I think I heard from Nurya. That one's already underway. Are you satisfied?
Um, well, I, I am satisfied, but not because it's already underway. What I was requesting is not underway, but I was requesting with something completely different, but I think, I think it's, I'm going to take it off my request list because it's premature. Um, what, what Nurya and I, I talked about offline is, I'm going to sit down with, and she doesn't, maybe not know it yet, with our IT director, Jen Douglas.
She does.
Thank you, Jenna. Look forward to it. And with Tim Scott and anybody else on Jen's team. Um, and, and I'm happy to have another council member join me if this is an area of passion for you. And, and probably bring in some members of the business community, maybe the chamber, or, because I know it's champion this. Because I think there's been some change in technology. 5G is obviously with us. There's maybe some cost evaluation to do. And so I'm going to take it on as my task and any council member can join me to spend some time with, with Jen and with Tim and, and maybe with the chamber and talk about what, what is now, what, what looked like it may have been a priority in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, may or may not be a priority now. And we'll kind of scope this for, for council and maybe bring this back to you guys later this year. And maybe this is something we can be talking about at this council retreat in two thousand twenty-three, if that's okay with everybody else.
Matt, question or comment on that?
Yeah, no, I, I love that, Bob. I would just ask that if you could add the stakeholders, those from the community connectors. Because, you know, there's so much that this is an equity issue. And yeah, so clearly when we saw the pandemic and people being stuck home and having to do work and or school, you know, lower income and marginalized communities got hit the hardest with regards to internet and, and access. So their voice would be really important into making those decisions.
Di- digital divide is probably the biggest driver of, of all of this, Matt. Thank you.
Excellent. Lauren, thought or comment on that one?
I'd be really interested in joining you on that, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren.
Awesome. Anybody else?
Maybe we could hear from Jen if, if she agrees with that process.
Jen, what do you think?
Uh, I look forward to it and, and we're well underway with a consulting company as well. So I would ask that we include the consulting company. We have an eight-month RFP slated and that work has begun. I'd also want to include Community Vitality with Yvette. They're, they're involved in this very heavily as well, but I look forward to working with you. This is really exciting for the city. We're just going to be completing our phase one of our sixty-mile fiber work being done. It'll be completed in two thousand twenty-two. So now's the time to think about what's our next phase and what are we going to do with that, with that fiber? So welcome, um, working with you, Bob and Lauren and anyone else.
All right. Thank you all very much. I'm not sure you saw, you got an actual thumbs up from Yvette on that one as well. All right. Got a couple more of these to crank through pretty quickly, just assault weapons ban. Mark, are you satisfied that that one was already covered?
Yes, I am. Um, and I'm looking forward to the product of that.
Excellent. Thank you. And Rachel, COVID, I had a couple things there, virtual versus in-person meetings. Things she said while she coughed. Hill Dining and Vaccine Passports. Do you understand those to be underway as you describe them? Yes, no?
I have a couple of questions on it and just wanted to ask on your last question to Mark. Should that be broader? I, I didn't look at the language, but it's, it's bigger than assault weapons ban. It's gun violence prevention suite of, of legislation. So do we need to change the verbiage there?
Mark, did you have that?
Um, I, I agree with Rachel. I, I think it ought to be a suite. If, if we're not accommodating that, uh, yes, I would like to change it so that we can accommodate a suite of, of regulations, hopefully in conjunction with other communities within the county, but at the very least by ourselves.
I'll just add that for staff's work plan, we did expand it to gun violence prevention efforts. So we should have you covered.
Imagine.
Okay. And then I did have a couple of questions on mine. So I had sort of a three-part, I, I had a cheat with three parts under COVID. So I want to make sure that all of them are underway. I, I think Nurya gave that a little smile. I'm not sure. One is, is sort of the data-informed triggers and requirements for return to chambers for us, for boards and commissions, for members of the public, journalists, you know, everybody sort of want to make sure that we have a targeted date for that and are shoring up something that says you will be in council meetings in real life unless some threshold of don't come in is met.
Do you want to go through all your three or do you want me to?
Uh, well, you want to do them one at a time?
One at a time.
Okay, that one is certainly underway. We are already working with our Boulder County Public Health counterparts. We'll be using what they use as well and sort of adding not just the stages of transmission and then what mitigation factors need to do. And we're going to be using that too for our own staff or when we're calling folks back in. So that is underway and we hope to get that to you yet this quarter, I believe.
So could we just for, for work plan avoidance purposes, put a date on that of like when we'll have that in place and when we will expect that to follow it? So like, we'll have those triggers established by March first and we'll be back in chambers by April first, barring, you know, the threshold exceeding.
We'll get back to you on those particular dates, but yeah.
Great. Um, I, I see Junie has her hand up, so I'll wait to go into my number two.
Go ahead, Junie.
Thank you. I just have a question. I'm slightly confused as to why is this on our priorities list and what is it we're trying to do? Because the COVID nineteen and whether we should be in chambers or not is a health department issue as opposed to having Nurya decide when we should be in chambers or her staff decide that. So I'm slightly confused by that. Can somebody help me?
Sure. I, I mean, it's my, it's my list, so I'll explain from my perspective. It feels like what we've been doing is going with our guts instead of going with health. So we've been saying like, I don't think it's safe to meet. And so I've asked for us to follow health, like to establish some health guidance and triggers that will say, it's safe to meet under these conditions and it's not safe under those. So we will meet if the conditions are met according to health guidance. And so we're just asking that those be established. And kind of like when the governor had, like, if you're in, you know, the blue zone, you're okay. If you're yellow, then, you know, you should be wearing masks. If it's this, then we're going to trigger X, Y, and Z. So just some, some data-backed scientific measures for deciding when we're going to be in real life. Was that a thumbs up or a question? I couldn't read the thing.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to say, I hope, I'm not sure how I feel about this process yet because I don't fully understand it myself. I hope whatever guideline that we decide to go with, it comes from well-informed. I don't know, are we going to hire a doctor as a consultant, someone who understands COVID nineteen? And who knows? Because I just don't see how, what, because you mentioned the governor. The governor has a lot of resources. They have doctors telling them, you know, they have probably, I don't know, someone who's who's in contact with the CDC to know what the guideline looks like. So I'm just not sure if, you know, if Nurya is well-equipped to come up with that guidance and how can we support her as a council? Well, she needs to hire a consultant, hire staff to get to that, to that response that we need. I just don't think it's for, as formulaic as we might try to get it done here today.
Nurya, how are you understanding the expectation here?
Yep. And I'll say I, I'm a doctor's daughter, but I do not play one in real life, right? So I will say that it will not necessarily be my trigger that says, all right, everybody back in. There are some formulas and we are working really closely with Boulder County Public Health. They have a matrix that they use to sort of say, uh, these are, if we're in high transmission, these are your layered mitigation strategies and we recommend people not be in close proximity. We recommend people be constantly masked and so forth. And as we're lowering those transmissions, they too have told us, these are the, uh, the mitigation needs that you can, but you can now meet in small groups or in groups without a mask. So we will not be inventing those, right? We will be putting forward what Boulder County Public Health does. But, and to that point, there will be continued conversation because just because those triggers are there, I presume that you will have conversations about that timing. But we too, as staff, need to do that. We get a lot of questions from our own staff is when we're coming back. And that has had to move. We had planned to launch in September. And when Delta hit, our transmission rates changed. And our advice from Boulder Public Health, Boulder County Public Health changed. And so we have moved that forward. Our intent, as we understand that, is to present that publicly. We are thinking about doing that online so that the public knows what that looks like. And it will be kind of layered, but we will at least know through then when it is safe to come back and have those conversations on, all right, at least for us as an organization, it will be phasing in and telling our folks, all right, we're going to go into hybrid work plan phase, right?
Thanks. Erin?
Just super quick, just that, yeah, that this would come back, right, as a recommendation, subject to further conversation by city council, right? We're not going to be forced to come back in person unless we talk it over.
I don't believe I have that ability to force you, so.
Right, just want to clarify that.
Strong con power. All right, so Rachel sounds like that one's underway. Next one?
Underway, great. Number two is vaccine passports for places like restaurants and gyms. Um, my understanding was that the county did not want to take that down and was sort of passing that down to cities to look at. So I've asked that we look at it and decide whether we want to establish vaccine passports. I'm personally supportive. Um, so I don't know where that.
We mark that as also greenlit, just because we are having those conversations with the county and what that looks like. Um, we are, need to have that conversation with our business community, certainly. Um, I would have preferred those conversations come from the state uh, and sometimes from the county. But as it's coming down to cities, it is something we do not take lightly. It is something that we want to make sure that we're having some engagement about. And during this initial Omicron phase, uh, uh, we perhaps have landed on the not yet, uh, considering where we are. But it is part of the discussion the COVID recovery team is having and we will bring that forward um, to council as we continue to have those conversations uh, moving on.
Could I make a uh, another pitch for putting a date on one that would come to council? Because if it's like fourth quarter, then you know, maybe. I I love to think that we're in a better place with COVID at that point. Like, it seems if it's relevant, it's relevant. You know, kind of on this after Omicron dips down and hopefully we're back into some situation where having, being vaccinated helps you not then, you know, attain COVID. So it seems like this would be a good to come back to us first quarter to decide whether we want to move forward with.
It is, and actually, we anticipate um, bringing that forward in the first quarter. It it is multi-layered, right? It is not just the health component, but the enforcement component um, that many of our colleagues in other cities are also looking at as we move forward. And then um, checking in because we've heard, well, actually, we've heard from both sides, right? We've heard businesses that do not want this, um, and we've heard actually from businesses that would welcome a city mandate. Because it would make um, staff and community uh, feel more assured that they are going into a place that is fully protected. And so know that it is on our list and that we um, plan to sort of land on uh, recommendations and a path forward. And we'll be informing you all in this quarter. Matt, you have a thought on that?
Yeah, I just I just want to echo what Rachel said and and I appreciate Nuri the the rapid work on this. Because I do see that time not having this option is time lost while we're in the midst of a peak of a pandemic. So I, you know, the the sooner we can do this, the better, especially while we're still in a concentrated indoor dining setting. Um, and and not knowing what's coming down the pipeline in terms of other variants. So the sooner we have an option, we can always turn it on and off based on uh, where things are at with regards to community spread and COVID as a whole. So I appreciate the wanting to work on that exped- expeditiously. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. And I just want to give a shout out to our Boulder County partners. Have you seen, we've had to move back their participation in our meetings? Because with the fire, they can no longer even have that capacity to do that. So know that we are working hand in hand and concert with them and want to make sure that what we do and what we recommend um, is uh, backed by their recommendations as a health concern as well. Thanks, Nuri. Rachel, you had one more. Um, this was your silver linings.
My silver linings, which is there were some good things that came out of COVID and I would like us to incorporate and make permanent those that we liked. Examples would be the um, permanent non-seasonal closure of West Pearl and possibly Hill Outdoor Dining. Um, and uh, you know, closing those to auto traffic and and better pedestrian uses. So um, I I think there were some other regulatory silver linings, but I don't know if that needs to be a work plan or if we need to give a some kind of a nod of five of what direction we want that to look like. But I think that we now have these changes. They're good changes. I'd like to sort of cement them.
Yep. Very wary on that. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Do you want me to go, Heather?
Yep.
Uh, again, I'd say that a lot of these are underway. I I I think perhaps uh, not just Hill Dining, but I would characterize this as outdoor dining. And we put our little outdoor sticky because we're coming back to you pretty soon here in February with an update. As we move that forward, there are, as you mentioned, Rachel, sir, other considerations that we ourselves have learned. And we are, as we identify those, we are putting those into practice. And if they have to come, for example, in the form of an ordinance change and whether that is um, things on inspections or um, building code or expanding um, the time in which um, liquor licenses are valid. All of those, like they're popcorn-ing as they come up because we've learned a lot through COVID. But know that the entire staff team and in particular Pam Davis, I want to give you a shout out uh, as leading the COVID recovery team. We're we're pulling those in and as we find them, we will be moving forward. So certainly we welcome, if you have particular things, you can certainly write to me to make sure that we've got that on our list. But there is a whole broad list of things um, that we have learned during COVID that we're going to be trying to implement. Um, and see if it it's feasible to make more permanent moving forward. And perhaps what we can do is provide periodic updates on um, some of those as we as we go on. But I don't necessarily think um, we need to include that as a work plan item per se. Thanks, Nuri. Bob?
Yeah, fir- first of all, Rachel, thanks for for raising the uh, particularly outdoor dining uh, issue. And I just want to emphasize what Nuri said. I I've spent a lot of time with with Yvette and with the business community over the last week or two. And some really great work is being done by Yvette on this. Um, I think we're going to see some some recommendations here literally in a few weeks on this. So I think this is definitely on the work plan. It it may be a two-phase process. There may be some discussion in kind of the February-March timeframe about outdoor dining. Remember, we do, we are up against a self-imposed deadline of April thirtieth. We asked staff to come back to us. In February or March, they are coming back to us in February, March. The work is really, really great. I think that Yvette's doing a great job. And we have some really good um, support in discussion with the business community around that. I hope that that um, Yvette and the business community can come walk, come walk into our virtual chambers hand in hand over the next few weeks and talk about the solutions they've come up with. And then I think there's probably a separate discussion, but I think it's already on the work plan around uh, permanence, uh, around this, around um, whether outdoor dining should be made permanent. Um, or or that we should have um, maybe some closures of some streets permanently, whether that's West Pearl on the hill or other parts of town. I think that's probably a maybe a phase two discussion, but I I do, I I will support Nuri and say that I feel confident that on the work plan, we'll be seeing that very, very soon.
Thanks, Bob. Erin?
Yeah, I I echo that. Thanks to Yvette and her team for working so hard on the outdoor dining. And I'm looking forward to seeing that come forward before too long. We just also want to elevate the uh, importance of the discussion of the making permanent the changes to West Pearl. Uh, the opening of that stretch of street to pedestrians. Um, so I very much hope we can make that permanent. So I want to make sure that that's on our consideration list and doesn't get lost as well.
Thanks, Erin. So based on all of that, Rachel, are you comfortable that your COVID-related items are on the to-do list?
Take it as a check. Yep, thanks.
Bigity. All right, friends, the last couple of two, three here are places where I might have um, misinterpreted some things. So uh, the first one is Tara, uh, Lauren, you had an item on um, small business support, which I thought I heard staff say, um, some version of that was underway. And Nuri was like, what the hell are you talking about, Bergman? So Nuri, I just checking in.
You have to be so honest about how I speak to you.
Um, I, this is, no version of this is on the current work plan. Is that correct?
Uh, not unless staff weighs in and tells me otherwise. I mean, we're always trying to support and ease regulatory burdens, but not as a particular work plan item.
Yvette, you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, in concert with the great work that we're always doing with uh, the planning department and David's team. I just wanted to hold up that we're consistently working in community vitality on all business support, including small business support. There are two ways that this is already um, tucked in, folded in to the work plan. And that's in the Economic Sustainability Strategy Update, as well as we're coming back on um, small business recommendations, implementing the retail strategy. I know that one thing that I I've heard the mayor talk about recently is the um, discussion around how we could ease the regulatory environment about this. And with um, some collaboration with David, I know that that is something we're always thinking about. Um, but I I will as follow up with some of you to to see if you have some more finite ideas.
So Lauren, then coming to you, based on what you know, what you heard, what you want, how you're thinking about this as a work plan item for prioritization.
Um, so I. I appreciate that staff is doing a lot of work in this area already. Um, I think that I, my ask right now would be a study session um, to sort of talk about the, what is being done. Um, and. What opportunities they see for changes. Um, you know. You, unless that's already going to be part of the retail strategy component. I think I kind of wanted to look at this a little bit more broadly than that. And um, having David and his team sort of come forward with any recommendations that they have for how um, we could ensure that we're being efficient with the regulations that we have. Um, and any modifications that might help ease both implementation and sort of app, you know, the application of our um, requirements.
Yeah, um, I appreciate that and I would work with David to try and get something scheduled to at least bring you up to speed on what we're doing. But um, I think we would work that through CAC and then um, based on all the other conversations, capacity-wise, I want to respect um, that as well from David's team. But we we look forward to following up with you, Lauren, and with the rest of council.
So Lauren, if that isn't added as a new prioritization item, but is put on the to-do list for study sessions, um, is that adequate from your perspective at this time?
I think that's adequate at this time.
Thanks. Thanks. All right, council, we had a couple more. I think we're in the home stretch here. Um, we had several things um, on public safety. We already talked about Mark's proposal on assault weapons and expanding the thinking around that just a little bit. That's got the green check. Erin, I want to check with you. Um, new mental health EMT program for low-level emergency calls. Staff gave that a green check. Um, are, based on what you've heard, are you satisfied that that is underway?
I am, yes. I understand that that staff is working on implementing the first version of that program, which I'm very excited about. So really appreciate that work.
And the other place then where I might have rounded up incorrectly is I put all those public safety ones on the green checklist. But um, Tara, I didn't process that that there was no green check here for your sort of varied suggestions related to crime reduction. What are your thoughts around that?
My thoughts are that the police are maxed out and we don't need more things for them to do right now so we can take this off the list.
All right, thank you. All right, well, in that case, council, we have a complete list of things. Um, just want to remind you that when we started a couple of weeks ago on a Tuesday night, we had forty-five items. That's nine members of council get five items. In the course of your conversation, your integration, your homework, we have um, gotten that down to twenty-two items. Um, and I have been tracking them here on my little spreadsheet. And so we come to the part where we need for you to do some some really tough thinking. Um, what I have is again, each of the items, I've been putting that language back to you as I've heard it. I have one question before we finalize this list, but these are all going down here. Um, the topic that we discuss is here in the beginning, so you can, if if all the words that I have there aren't quite the right words, I hope that helps you get to the context. And then it comes all the way down here to row twenty-three. But since we use the first one as headings, that gives us twenty-two items. Um, real quick, before I take the other questions and comments, Lauren, you had suggested uh, last night um, the condoizing um, item as an addition to the uh, code change conversation for ADUs. I did hear from David Gere that that was a separate kind of really big lift, so I listed it separately, but I want to make sure you feel like that was treated fairly.
Um, yeah, I mean, of course, I still want it to be thought of with the other things, but I I can understand the argument for breaking it out separately.
Okay, so before I take the the questions that might be about what the process is, I'll tell you what I'm thinking and then we can see if it feels right. So what I have heard from Nuri um, is that in general, department-specific timing, to be clarified, as a hiring goes on. There is capacity for ten to twelve-ish new items. And the the ishiness sort of again depends on on how those things are 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 put on the calendar in terms of what needs to be done in two thousand twenty-two versus what can hold until there's more staffing. Um, so my thinking would be um, asking you each to go through and identify the ten items that you think are the highest priorities. Don't think about the timing too much. We'll circle back to that, but just overall, which of these twenty-two items, which ten? Do you think are the most important, most impactful um, to work on during your shared term? And then we'll look at those numbers and then visit a little bit about what that might mean in terms of timing and allocation. So that's what I was thinking. I want to hear from Bob, Rachel, and then Erin. Um, what do you think about that, Bob?
I'm going to make um, what may be an unpopular and minority suggestion, but I'm going to throw it out there for whatever it's worth. These are all great ideas and I'm going to have a really hard time coming up with ten out of these twenty-two. And I'd like to reflect on it because I've heard some really great arguments and I've been persuaded by my colleagues over the last two days. And I don't feel prepared to vote on ten right now. And I know that prolongs things and means that we wouldn't have with a work plan at twelve oh one this afternoon. But I would like to take a couple of days and think about this. I may even have some offline questions for my colleagues. And so what I'd like to suggest is that we, I I love your rule of ten. That's great. I'm not going to fight that. But that I that we would take a few days, maybe this week, reflect on these things, ask each other questions offline. And then you can give us a deadline and say, have your votes in by such and such a day. I realize that means that we would have to come back, perhaps to the study session. We might need to impose on you, Heather, to rejoin us. And and tally up the votes and then and then we talk about timing and prioritization. But I'm and and I might be in the minority on that, but I just want to throw that out as a suggestion.
All right, I'll hear from some of your colleagues and see if they agree or disagree. Rachel, similar or different thought?
Well, I had a different thought. Uh, I'm I'm trying to process Bob's now so I can speak to it. Like, I don't want to delay this work plan, so I I don't know how I feel about coming back to it. I wonder if maybe we could, you know, if there's really strong consensus for like, we know we're doing these three. Like, maybe we could, you know, have a couple of different sections, like, let's let's figure out what the top five are and and like, move those forward. And then we can kick around the others and and prioritize like a tier two or something. I might be, that that might make sense. But also I was hoping Heather, like, like with ranked choice voting, you don't want to, you know, you get a situation to not waste your vote. So I kind of wonder, could we do a straw poll before we walk away either way? Um, and see which of these even has is viable for five people, so I don't vote for, you know, that whatever uh, resiliency. If it doesn't have a chance of getting to five votes. So if we could just do an initial maybe pass and straw poll of show of hands, are there five people that are going to even look at this one? And if not, then I don't want to waste a vote on one that's not viable. So that's my thoughts.
I'll entertain that. Um, let me hear from Erin and then Mark and then Tara. Erin, hit it.
Or so um, like I did some more specific suggestion. One, I I, we talked about TBAP in in housing, but it, I think it was more of a planning issue, just in terms of a labeling thing. It's, we'll get lots of housing there, but I think it's a planning initiative. One thought would be it it with the housing items, I think there was, sounded like there was a a lot of interest in at least almost all of them. And I wonder if rather than only getting to pick, ending up with two or maybe three out of our ten total. If we could have housing take up a couple of our items, but then make make it into a queue like we were talking about. So that that we don't just erase two-thirds of those off the list, but we say, okay, here's an a rough order to tackle them in. And we'll we'll get to as much of them as we can with this council and and still keep keep some of those items on the list. And Heather, do you want to respond to that?
Just so I understand, so that would be sort of a a forced ranking of the housing items to know where your shared priorities are. But they would then become sort of a a running queue and whatever the highest ranking one would be the first one. And then you would ask staff to sort of get after them as they could?
Correct, yeah. And and that that together, they might, you know, take two slots, you know, something like that out of the, out of the ten. And I'll I'll just respond to to Bob. Bob, on the one hand, I, we're all getting tired here. And so, you know, it it would be good to have more time to reflect. Um, on the other hand, I worry a little bit about like, the furious lobbying that would take place. You know, suddenly like every interest group in in the city who cares about this stuff would mobilize their supporters. And we'd get like hundreds and hundreds of emails over the next five days. And then people calling us day and night and and we'd all have a different process than we've been going through together with this retreat. And um, and it seemed like, it was like it might be good to to finish it out or at least mostly today.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Mark, what's on your mind?
I I think similarly to uh, to Bob on this, I mean, to, for for the magnitude of these work items. To try to decide it in the next twenty-four minutes is a little strange to me. And I would like to think about it. Um, there were some that I like very much. There are some I I like a little less, but you know, trying to do this on the run. Um. I I just don't think it's it's reflective of a of, you know, the of a deliberative body doing its job well. Um, so I I I would. So I, I would personally like to have a little more time to decide, you know, how do I rank the blue ribbon commission on council pay versus, you know, citywide bus pass and parking. I, I, I can't tell you offhand. And I, I think being able to think about it, even if we just have two days to submit this form, I think would be very useful.
How about you, Tara?
Now that I have, have heard from everybody previously, I'm torn because I like, I agree with everybody. I agree with Bob that there's no way that I can, you know, even remember from the beginning of last night where we started with this. On the other hand, I agree with Erin that we are going to get a lot of phone calls and emails. So I'm torn. And I also agree with Rachel that we should narrow it down. So in the amount of time that we have, I'm going to go with, let's narrow down first. I agree. I don't even know, but we need to do an iteration of everybody's great ideas. That's my final decision.
Okay. All of you, are your hands still up? Do you want to say more things? You've said your piece, put your hand down if you would. I do want to come to Nurya. Nicole's got a thought. And then Nurya, I'd like to hear what you're thinking on urgency and such things. Nicole?
I think I'm going to actually prefer to hear from Nurya before I ask my question.
Fair enough. So Nurya, there's some trade offs here. If we have them ranked them now, you'll have some clarity coming out of today and can do some additional work to circle back. You might get more thoughtful responses if we give council time to noodle. Also acknowledging that there might be some lobbying and other such things of colleagues or by the community. What do you as staff need in, in what format?
Well, it's a difference, right? What does staff prefer versus what do they need? Right? There, there is no need. We can certainly wait, but it is helpful to narrow these down a bit as quickly as we can. I do think that staff certainly has, if you ask staff to weigh in on of all the housing choices, what we think could get done sooner rather than later, that would be helpful, I think. But if that is not what you need, then perhaps at least trying to figure out what are the ones that there really is no consensus about? Because maybe we can narrow that way as well, but narrowing is preferred and we can't make you do that today. We've been certainly working up to that. So it'll be, we'll, we'll have to wait and see how you do. But frankly, narrowing is preferred as we move forward on this, because we still have twenty two priorities that are not going to be able to move forward. And maybe that's just at least being able to give us your top ten as quickly as we can, because there are some that you know, as a group, I think that are going to move forward.
Couple of council letters want to jump in, but Chris Meschuck, this is certainly not your first rodeo. Do you have anything to add to the conversation on ways to proceed?
Sure, I'm happy to share a little bit of perspective just from seeing other retreats. And obviously many of the council members have seen other retreats as well as I, I think there might be the opportunity here to have, have priorities. If we really think about it, the, the goal of what we're trying to achieve out of this retreat is what are the top priorities for council in the next two years? And I think those priorities can be, for lack of a better term, kind of categories or specific initiatives. If we think back to previous council priorities, that's kind of what the list looked like. So if, if coming out of today, there was the ability, as Nurya just described of, it looks like housing is probably a priority for council. If we can't get to which of those housing priorities are maybe at the top of the list, I think that's okay. But I think if you could say housing is a top priority, we're going to prioritize kind of the subcategories in the next couple of weeks. I think that could be okay. But then you were still kind of driving towards your, your top ten list of the top ten priorities for, for council. And then it may be that there's a specific one, say, I don't know, I'm making it up here, the Boulder airport. That's a really specific task if that lands on that top ten list. So I, I think if there's the ability for council to get to kind of that here today, I think that would be great with some additional refinement. But I think as we've started to hear it is kind of the, it'll be the will of council on which direction you want to go.
I have a middle ground suggestion that I'm happy to make after we hear from Nicole and Matt and Rachel. And I certainly hope we don't spend the last, the next eighteen minutes talking about process. Go ahead, Nicole.
Thank you. Great. So for me, it doesn't feel like this decision is going to be easier. I think I'll have more time to think about it. But it's still going to be a hard decision because there are lots of really great ideas here and we have to winnow it down. So I really liked what Rachel suggested about just kind of going through these, seeing which of these even have five people that are kind of interested in putting it in their top ten. Not necessarily that those are our top ten, but you know, we know which ones are sort of out, out of this list, right? That'll get us to a smaller list. At that point, can we each find ten within that smaller list so that we can move forward? I just don't see this decision getting any easier, even though I also like to have time to process. I don't know that this is going to be a case where it's going to give us a lot of new information. I think it's just to the complexity and the hardness.
Okay, Matt?
Thank you, Nicole and Rachel for pointing that out. I, I think we're going to get where we need to be by getting things off the list rather than trying to start with what we're including on the list. So yeah, I'd start with just a straw poll on each one. And if it's only two people, get, get rid of it and, and not to diminish the value and the work that that could be, but if we can shorten this list and tighten it up to fifteen and then make our ten, then I think we're in a much better place to make that conversation. And to be, to be fair, we've all been thinking about this for months or years. And so a, a couple more days, I'm not sure what that's going to gain because we've all been noodling this for a long, long time. And so I, we, we can make these decisions and I think we're going to do well doing it.
Thank you. Rachel?
Agree. And, and for the, the sake of efficiency, I wonder if I may make a motion during a retreat? That, that are we within Robert's rules to do that? No? All right. Well, I'm going to make a suggestion then. Number one, do a straw poll. And number two, we agree to extend this meeting by at least an hour if we need and just get on board with doing that as a group.
Okay. I would say let's punt on that second thing until we know if we need it based on the straw poll because the rest of it might shake out. Erin, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree on the, the straw pulling. It's a good approach. I just wanted to point out a couple to maybe lower our list already. The number seventeen, which was create an election commission to begin work in Q one twenty twenty four. Earlier I had suggested that that didn't need to be a top ten priority item. Because it's a decision we would make, you know, mid, late next year to then stand something up. So I think if we just you know, express an interest in it and then it's something we do next year, I don't think it has to get on our top ten list. Similarly, I would just say that the number nineteen, the legislative decision regarding the judge adjudication of campaign issues, we can express some interest in that, but I don't think that needs to be a top ten list because I think it's just a decision that we do in collaboration with Judge Cook.
So I, I think you're actually heading down sort of the, the preliminary thinking on straw polling. I like the idea of I'll go through these really quickly and you will either raise, raise your hand if you you are considering having that be in your top ten. And if a majority of you are there, we'll leave it on. And if not, we'll take it off. And I'll need to someone help, help catch, track the numbers for me with, with me along because I'm a little slow on the uptake.
Those that are visually impaired, could you make this bigger? Because I can't read that.
Yes, and I'm going to read them to you also. But yes, I can definitely make it bigger.
Just, just Heather, to just make a distinction, I was saying that those could be things that we are interested in, but don't need to be on the top ten list.
Understood. But just you saying it, Erin, doesn't mean I'm going to take it off the list. I want to make sure the rest of the council shares your perspective.
I just wanted to clarify the proposal.
Yeah, Heather, I wanted to clarify, like, I'm not voting on things I, I just don't support, but I could vote on eighteen things, right? I don't, I'm not limited to ten here.
Here, on the straw poll, you are limited to nothing. You just hit them all. Okay? So in a minute, when I ask you to tell me what your top ten are, how many of you anticipate having the housing ordinance to revise existing code for revision of inclusion, inclusionary housing for more middle income units? If you're considering that, please give me some sign. I see one, two, three, four, a whole bunch of you. All right, that one's going to stay on the list. And anything that doesn't make this cut, we're going to put in a parking lot. It just, we're not just going to delete it until forever.
Heather, for consistency, do you want to have us raise the virtual hand so that we all?
I would prefer that. Yes, that's easier for me to track. Thank you.
We agree to raise the virtual hand.
Yep. Thank you. Next item, how many of you anticipate considering passing an ordinance to change those regulations in some zone? So you calculate density from dwelling unit to floor area ratios. Those are pretty targeted things and reducing parking requirements. I see one, two, three, four, five of you. Thank you. Six, we'll keep that one on the list. How about code changes for ADUs to remove the saturation limit for ADUs within a certain radius and to allow someone to have internal and external ADUs if they meet all the other requirements? One, two, three, four, a bunch of you, six, okay? Code change to allow opportunities for ADUs to be condoized, which is just a fun word to say. One, two. All right. Samuel, just checking, you're going to keep these. So I'm going to delete it from the list, but you'll keep a parking lot item list elsewhere. So council, don't panic. When I delete this, I'm not just vanishing it to, to know where Bill Samuel's got it. All right. Code change to, on co-op fees to reduce the fee increased duration between licensing and less paperwork. Okay, got six of you there. Kickoff phase two of TBAP. Okay, got seven of you there. Launching the middle income down payment assistance program. Okay, so fun. Now, all, all that, all that little boxes move around, getting a little seasick. Okay, great. I think we're good there. Six of you. All right. Code change to remove constraints on triplexes and duplexes. Is it RH one or R one? And whatever that's supposed to be, and to allow the city to buy homes in neighborhoods. Okay, a bunch of you like that one as well. Create a new program to allow the city to purchase single family homes to convert triplexes and duplexes and make deed restriction, make them deed restricted attainable. One Z, two Z, three Z. Okay. See only a couple of you on that one. So we'll take that one and put it in the parking lots. Now we're moving on to homelessness. Initiate a two year process for planning and implementation for a day shelter with service provision. Several steps identified there. Lots of you like that one. All right, we'll leave that one on the list. Another homelessness, place an item on the twenty twenty two ballot to create a tax to support programs and services for those experiencing homelessness. Okay, I'm only seeing three hands for that one. So we'll put that one in the parking lot. Transit, launch the CAN planning process for protected bike lanes. Yes, we can. Yes, we will keep it on the list for sure. All right. How about implementing the citywide bus pass and parking effort? I see one, two, three, four, five. Thank you. Got six of you there. Okay, moving up. On occupancy, do a comparative analysis from other communities and develop a model occupancy approach and solicit community input with an eye toward an ordinance change. Ooh, lots of you on that one. All right. And then initiating the urban services study for area three planning reserve. Six, got it. Thank you. And having heard Erin's previous comment, creating an election commission to begin work. One, two, three, four. Okay, so this might be, oh, five. There it is. All right, we're going to leave it on the list. Okay, and then how about putting that measure on the twenty twenty two ballot to move elections to even years beginning in twenty twenty four? One, two, three, four, five on that one. Thank you. Six. All right. And then legislative decision regarding the, having the judge, not the clerk adjudicate campaign issues as a council priority. Okay, only seeing four of you. We'll add that to the parking lot issue as some folks said that there may be other ways for you to tackle that one. Council pay the, establish the blue ribbon commission on that topic. Two, three, four, five, six, a bunch of you. Cool. All right, we'll leave that one. And resiliency against disaster, the comprehensive citywide plan. If that one's on your potential priority list, one, two, three, four, five. Thank you. How about standing up the stakeholder committee to explore funding options to support increased community resiliency? One, two, three. One, two, three, our four. All right, we're going to put that one. Can y'all just raise your hands on this one again? Because you, someone are coming on and off and I just want to make sure I'm treating it fairly. If you are considering this one. Okay, if that one's got two, so we're going to put that one on the parking lot list. Last but not least, the Boulder airport preliminary study to determine all the things that we previously talked about determining. I see three, I see four. All right, not seeing a not a five to keep that one on the list. We're going to put that one on the parking lot. All right, so that took five items off, off your list of potential things. Mark, is your hand still up? Do you want to say something?
No, no.
Okay, cool. All right. So what I would suggest is now I give, send this to each of you. I will send it to you privately in the chat if that's, if that's adequate. Put it to everybody in the chat, then everyone in the free world can edit your responses. I would be, I would suggest, I guess my question is, how much time do you need to do this work? Coming back to Rachel suggesting that we may need to extend our meeting, Justice Scoush. Erin, suggestions?
Heather, I'm going to, I'm going to try again on, on the housing thing. So we've got, we've got seventeen things left on the list. I continue to think that the election commission is a small enough effort for this council in late next year. That doesn't have to be one of our ten priorities. So if we just say we're going to work on these housing items in an order to be determined and call that two or three things. We're, we're there.
Okay, I, I'm going to look at Nurya and see if she is, if she's buying that.
Huge thing for housing, I'll just say, though. I mean, I'm happy to figure out if you have a priority for Q because at least we know what that is, but those are not a package per se, right?
Absolutely. It's a, they're, they're a queue. They would become a queue that we would get to in, in the order as we could. Understanding that we're absolutely not tackling all of them at once.
Or in the, in the midst of the term, I want to just be honest and, and make sure that I create expectations that it could be that we don't get to them at the duration of the term, but some of them are larger lifts.
Understood.
And then Erin, if we took that approach, would you defer to staff and their expertise on which they could do? Like, you know, impact versus effort and have them come back to you with sort of a, we think this is the, the optimal sequence and then you all could discuss that?
I'm, I'm open to my council colleagues' thoughts, but, but yes, we could, we could have a study session where staff came back with relative amounts of lift and we could then put them in an order.
Okay, Lauren, what are your thoughts on that?
So I think it's more than just, I mean, my guess, Erin, is part of why you're bringing this forward is because planning is a like department that has a particular cap and all of these things are sort of going to be with, mostly held with that one department. So even if we choose five of them as our top priorities, we're we should be spreading the workload out across city departments a little bit more evenly.
Correct.
I think that some of the problems is that like some of the other ones, like occupancy and planning are also going to be in that same group in terms of the department that they're mostly held with. And but I mean, maybe it makes sense to take those what, ten things and do a priority list for them and then do a priority list for the remaining things. I, I don't know. It just I think that we do need to have a priority list for each. For all together.
Great. Thanks, Lauren. Junie?
I just want to go back and say it. I do agree with Rachel and just expanding. It's already twelve. Maybe if we extend this meeting to an hour, we can get to it. These eight items, I'm looking at them. Of course, city staff knows better where things fit in, but I feel like number two and number three seems to be pretty much in the same bucket. It's talking about ADUs. And I'm thinking it must be the same department. So can that rolled into one? So that means that we would only have seven items to look into. So maybe we should just group all the items that are, that seems to be very similar into one. Does that create more work for staff? I don't know, but we have eight items, but I do believe we can narrow it down and get it done instead of dragging the meeting until, until next week and when we're going to have hundreds of emails, if not more, from community members who's going to sway us one direction or the other.
And I'll just say, we don't have to talk a long time about process. If, if, if my idea doesn't seem appealing to you, it's totally fine. We can just vote on the ten.
Okay, let's hear from Rachel and then Matt and determine if we're extending so we can at least figure out the heck we're going to do. Rachel?
I'm seeing fourteen and I can't, like, I'd like to be able to see all of them and maybe have this document sent to me in a way that I can sort of prioritize in, in my own head or something because I'm just not sure exactly what all is still in the running. So could you possibly email us the one through? It looks like now seven. No, great, thanks.
I can. I'm just going to put it in the chat to each of you. Matt, while that's happening, thoughts? Matt, while that's happening, thoughts?
Yeah, I, I, I like where Aaron's going, I, I think there's clearly ten here that are housing and planning related. That's gonna be heavy lift for David and, and that department. And I think we can probably right now just say, hey, what are the, what are the three that we want to start now? And then let the conversation go on where the rest of the cadence is, because at the end of the day, we're, we want to institute work now on some things and we know others can start later. But I think out of that ten, we can be very clear, what are the things that we want to start now and let that chew up the staff time in the immediate? And then have that conversation with staff of where the others fall in the queue. I think we can decide that now to whittle the ten to three that start now, and then the remaining seven are in this queue that we sort of determine down the road.
Nurya, what are your thoughts about all that?
I'll just say again, I think, I mean, I, I appreciate that, Matt, and think that if you pick the three, then that actually, almost with all the rest, with some changing and tweaking, gets us to ten, I mean, that's I think that's the point, and what I hear, right, is that the others on perhaps housing and PD and desk, because it's two departments that are taking the heavy lift. The other ones are things that are really high priorities, but perhaps need to go on to that parking lot until we have more capacity, but we know that those are the things that you all want to think about. But if you can get to on housing in particular, to the top three, that would really be helpful as we move forward.
So if, if that makes sense as a way forward, I might suggest that council members, you go into that link I just sent you and in your column, just for the housing items, pick what you think are your top three and it'll add it up, and then we can maybe get to a top three here fairly efficiently. I would suggest we're probably gonna extend our meeting for a little bit, but I'm not sure we need a whole hour. I don't, for a retreat, I don't know that there's a process need other than we just keep going. Aaron, can we just keep going?
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion, just.
Okay.
Theresa's not. Question, if we're, if we're in a document, is that, that's okay for like, open records, if we're each writing in there at the same time during a meeting? I don't know if the public can see what we're doing.
I understand these to be individually sent to you, is that right?
They're individually done and they'll pop up here on the spreadsheet as we're looking.
Okay. Yep, so as long as we keep a record of that, we're good, thank you for asking, Rachel.
Just a clarification question, you're asking us to, among items two through eight, only to, to identify our top three, is that, is that right?
Correct, and I will.
No, there's two more that are housing and planning related, so it's really ten.
Which one?
Planning, planning reserve and occupancy.
That was my, my clarifying question, is just, are we including those in the housing?
And I suggest that maybe if we get to the top three on housing, then we look at the list again, because you're gonna have a little bit more than ten, and then maybe get to that.
Okay, let's start with housing, see where that gets us. And then we'll let staff tell us if we need to do more, so here, I'm gonna block in blue the ones we need for you to identify your top three from.
And I, I just, I want to say again that the TBAP is really a planning project rather than like a housing policy project.
Nurya, should I, just from the staff perspective, should it stay in this list or should we move it down?
I will defer to Kurt and David if you think it's a housing or a planning project.
Kurt, David? I need a mo, any, many?
I would say that they're
It's more planning, yeah.
Planning, okay, we'll bring that down.
Hey.
Maybe Heather, while they're doing that, we can group that up to the other planning item.
Yep, just let me unblue it so I don't confuse all the humans. So just so you're tracking, items will be calculated over here, number of, of Xs per item, and then making sure that we ain't got no cheaters on council, it'll also add up how many Xs you put down here. I trust you, though.
Is there cumulative voting, can we vote for, for one thing twice?
No. This is the advantage of this over dots, so we don't have the conversation, can I split my dot, can I tear it in half, can I put all my dots in one place?
I really want to split my dot.
How, how does one indicate? Just by, by X?
Yep, put an X in your box. The formula is set to count Xs, thanks for asking that.
Well, I'm trying that and not, nothing's happening.
Are you anonymous jackal down here?
No, I'm right here.
Okay, do you want to put yours in the chat to me and I'll see if I can do it on your behalf?
Okay.
Don't know what's going on there.
I think one of them got switched in the deletion. If I'm not mistaken, the code changes to remove constraints on triplexes to allow the city to buy homes in neighborhoods. Was that the one that was, I don't know if that was the one that kept, which was just to, or the one that was just to remove constraints on doing duplexes and triplexes in R1, or did they get combined?
No, they're supposed to be separate, did I, did I overly delete?
Deleted the one about buying, but I think you still left the language in number seven about buying. So I think it's kind of.
Okay, so let me just put that one back in, sorry about that, that's what happens when I delete on the fly while everyone's watching.
No, I think you deleted correctly. I think you need to go to cell seven and delete the term and allow the city to buy homes in neighborhoods.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, David. All right. Looking from, and Mark, you'll put your homework in the chat to me.
I'm, I'm on it right now.
All right, awesome, sorry about that, not sure why you're, you don't get to add up. Junie, go ahead, question, comment? Nope, okay.
Scroll one to the left, Heather, we're missing that. Please. Thank you.
Okay. And we're just gonna wait until Mark gets his, a couple of you aren't quite done yet, anyway, Judy, looks like you can have one more, I'll get Mark's in a GIF. Tara, yes?
You see that line five isn't, isn't totaling?
Nope, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Okay.
Hey.
And Mark concluded something in the chat that has his.
Does that look right, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, Bob, need to see one more from you if you feel so inclined.
I'm good.
Okay, fantastic, in that case, council, we'll call that done, that looks like your highest priorities for housing items are the ordinance to remove existing, or to revise existing code for revision of inclusionary housing for more middle income units, that's item number two. And item number four, the code change for ADUs to remove that saturation limit and associated items, and then coming in at third place, there is middle income down payment assistance program. Okay, Nurya, what do you take from this?
That's a, it's a tie.
It's a tie.
Oh, it's a tie, thank you. And the ordinance on how we're gonna calculate density, thank you for catching that, so we have four-ish top things there. David, Nurya, what's your takeaway?
I'm buying with that.
Yeah, it's better than seven is my takeaway.
Okay, and for the other items that are, sounds like there's still a fair amount of council interest into those, become sort of a, a cue, should you have some amazing staff capacity that shakes up later in the, in the year or next year?
I do, and I think this prioritization also allows us to know which ones perhaps to move forward or not, but we will take those offline and then see, just know that those are your interests as we move forward, so that is helpful.
Yeah, very helpful, thank you.
So does that mean then, again, just to be super clear, we have four housing priorities and then these remaining items down here as well. Appreciating there's maybe a gray area on the election items as Aaron mentioned, and you will carry these things forward?
Well, I would, I would, my preference would be, and this is up to you, all right, but then, let's, now that we've saved those, let's eliminate the non four and see if we could even get down with all of these, because we still have staff capacity, there's a lot of there's a couple occupancy, there's planning, there's, how does that weigh into the existing four priorities? So now maybe let's see if we can narrow from this on top ten. Or even dot matrixing, because that's helpful as well, the same exercise you just did now for ten.
So you'd like council to identify maybe a top you want them to force rank them or just pick maybe their top five of these and then we'll see what shakes out?
Yeah, we can do top five of those, yep.
Could we do seven, just because we, you know, use three already on the housing stuff, and then maybe we're allocating the rest across the remaining ones?
Sure, okay, Aaron, what do you think about that?
Well, I'll say that these are in some very different buckets, so, you know, like the, the elections and the transit are just completely different people, and so I don't know if we want to, we need to rank all of these against each other, but maybe where, where their overlap, like when we have planning initiatives or transit initiatives that we prioritize within those.
I would only say this, that some of them are, are different people, and you're right, certainly transit is, is some, but some of them will have some overlap, particularly with like city attorney's office or some other of our of our internal services folks, but certainly I, I get where you're, I get where you're going.
I wonder if we just shouldn't overthink it, just get a gut check on what the remaining top seven are and then see.
I'm just to make sure we have, I get, yeah.
That if, if there's crunch time on staff bandwidth, council or staff would know where to allocate it, are you comfortable with that, Aaron?
Sure.
Are we, like, I would prefer that we rank these, like, I feel pretty strongly about a couple of these as compared to others, so even if they're in my top seven, I would have a strong one versus seven, so rather than Xs, or we at least asking people to use numerical ranking.
I wonder if we could start with just Xs, just as an initial check. And if we need, that, that may right there, narrow it down a little bit, if not, then maybe we could think about ranking, but I wonder, sort of like we would take a straw poll, you know, see if there's because rankings is gonna take me a lot more time at least to figure that out.
A lot more time.
And then add one more question on homelessness before I before we move farther in this, like, the language that was settled on is initiated two-year process for planning for day shelter. And, you know, we talked about having a facilitator and my understanding is that facilitator is looking broader than day shelter, so can we change the language to reflect that what we're voting on is you know, a defined stakeholder process to look at homelessness issues, not just day shelter, before we carry that forward.
Nicole, your item?
Yeah, well, so the reason that, you know, Junie and I kind of focused on day shelter was just because that was something that came up repeatedly in people's priorities was specifically about day sheltering. My concern with kind of opening it up to a broader issue is the timing of that, and that this is where my personal priority of making sure that we are ready to go to apply for some of those funding that's coming down later this year is there. So I hesitate a little bit in that, but I would love to hear from the other folks who put homelessness down as a priority.
Okay, Matt, is this on your topic?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I had a priority of the day shelter and I, I, we, we worked so hard to craft the point, now's not the time to start chopping, I, I really think we need to kind of leave it, because that's what we've agreed upon as a package. And I, I just, I worry we're gonna run down a slippery slope here pretty quick.
Thanks, Matt. Bob?
I agree with Nicole and Matt, I, I, we, we will be constantly talking about homelessness, so I don't think we need to put that on a work line, that's a quarterly discussion we have all the time. I think this is a very discreet, distinct item, and I think Nicole is absolutely right that we need to focus on this particular thing, if that's the will of council.
Okay, thank you, Junie, oh, you said it. Okay, fantastic, all right, so let's try with seven more Xs in the purple items now, if you would. And Mark, if you still can't for a reason I really don't understand, put it in the chat and I'll take care of it for you. It's really weird. And then we'll come back just to catch Rachel's point to see if we're close enough or if we need to do some forced ranking among a couple of items. Thank you, Mark. Just check me as I go, Mark. Mark, I think you can have one more. You did six, you get seven. So down here at the bottom, folks, we'll know if you've done it right, if you end up, you get up to ten down here. For example, Bob said he wasn't gonna do three, so Bob's gonna stop at nine, but you do get up to ten in, in the bottom column. Mark, did you want to add one more, are you good?
I need eight.
Maybe one of your colleagues will cover it for you, Aaron, we'll see in a minute.
That's why we're forcing this ranking. Everyone needs eleven, right?
Y'all are killing me.
Hard choices. But I also heard, can get to them, it's just a question of timing and when.
All right. And truthfully, while folks are doing that, right, this is about where, seeing where we have alignment on urgency, not that they're not important, right? Because we will come back and continue to revisit and think about it and talk about it, because they're all good and important. But it is both capacity and alignment that we're shoring up here.
Okay. Several of you only have eight or nine, if your work is done, that's fine, if you're still working, let me know, Lauren, are you still working?
I'm having indecision.
Okay.
But maybe that says something also.
I am as well, and I was wondering if I should just kind of leave it at nine, not having a preference, let my colleagues. I don't, I don't know, just being the last one.
All right, council members, if you're done, could you please raise your little E-hand so I know when we're ready? You have time. Everything's fine. I'm not trying to rush you, I just don't want to be waiting if we're not, if we're not there yet.
I'm good.
Okay. You're done, Junie?
Yes.
Okay, will you raise your little E-hand for me?
Oh. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I didn't realize that I was on mute, off mute.
All good. All right, couple of you still thinking, and that's all right.
Just gonna raise my hand, I can't quite figure out between the last couple, so I'm gonna call it at nine.
That's all right.
Indecisive.
Tara and Mark, let me know when you're ready.
Quick question.
Ma'am.
How many do I? Don't laugh at me, nobody's allowed to laugh.
You get one more.
I get one more?
Yep.
Okay, good.
And you get a total of ten Xs.
If you want one more.
Yep, not obligated to spend them all. Can hear the gears turning.
I have a process question, can I ask?
Yep.
I just want to make sure for number fourteen, did we decide we were gonna keep it here or move it to a parking lot?
We decided to keep it here, because there were several that wanted to, to leave it, that's why it's still here, but Aaron has multiple times made a relatively compelling case that it maybe is a, is an apple among oranges. All right, Tara's, Tara's done, all the hands are up, y'all can drop your hands if you would, and it does look like to Nurya's point, Tara, did you have a question? Tara.
Sorry, don't laugh at me, I'm still having trouble finding the meat button.
I'm not, or yes, put in number 14.
Because I meant to. You did not, but I'd be happy to do it for you if that's what you wanted.
Please, I can't even do this anymore. Too much.
Yep, all right.
I have a comment to make.
Yes, please.
My comment has to do with number 14 and number 10. Because if we want to remove it, or if the reason why people are not voting for it is because of the compassionate statement made by Erin, then we should remove it because then I can put my, what's the word? I can put my X somewhere else where I think it would be actually more useful.
So before we go too far down this path, what I'm hearing from Nuriya is all of these things can be done. And it is, what we're figuring out now is the question of urgency and sequencing. And so what I take away, whether we change those things or not, is the most urgent items that council has identified are the homelessness day shelter effort as described, the yes, we can project, the comparative analysis on occupancy. And we have some close items thereafter on TBAP phase two and planning reserve, the urban studies services. So, Nuriya, I understand that you would interpret this list to be those are the things that you will lift up and start first and then the others will come along as capacity allows. Is that correct?
I would, I'd probably add the one that had six votes, which was even your elections. And then what we would do is take these larger items and add them to the four housing items and at least start to scope those out with some kind of a timeline so that we know at least what that is. And then put the rest sort of on that queue so that, again, knowing that if, if time allowed and opportunity came up, that we would know those are critically important to you as well.
Okay. Junie, does that answer your question?
Oh, wait.
Yep.
I think I made a mistake, Heather.
Okay.
Nobody's allowed to laugh. I say that again. I meant to put, because I can't see. I meant to put my X at council pay, blue ribbon commission on council, not number 14, but it's 16, looked like 14 because I can't see. Thank you.
All right. I don't think that changes the overall priorities, but it does clarify your personal priorities. So that's great. All is well. All right. Super helpful. Yep, Nuriya, you just wanted to, again, reiterate for council what you think you're taking away from this, and then let's talk a little bit about next steps.
Yep, I think what we're taking away is that there at least all, all of the priorities are important because you've been helpful in narrowing that down as we move forward. There are some that have more alignment in terms of urgency than others. It is now our task, I think, take like those four initial ones in housing and from the grouping that you just did now and start to scope those out with some sequencing and some capacity. Because to your point, there are two particular departments that are, that are more tasked with this is not so that we can make sure that we start to get to things faster on that timeline and we will come back to you. But all of them, we will take into account and have the ones that we can't get to yet, or the ones that perhaps have less urgency and alignment on, they're not less important, but put on a parking lot.
Fantastic. All right, I will stop sharing and I can clean up this spreadsheet just a little bit so it doesn't look quite so chaotic, but nothing else will change. Then I'll lock it so we don't accidentally delete someone's responses, which is always the risk with a Google sheet. With that in mind, council, I would like for each of you to take a moment and reflect on how you're finding yourself feeling as we leave today's retreat. Would love for one parting thought, not a parting shot, but a parting thought for your colleagues, for the community or for staff, whatever appeals. Would anyone like to volunteer to go first? Bob, thank you.
I would just say thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Erin, how about you?
Goodness. I'll say a little bit more than that. Can I just say how proud and happy and excited I am to work with this amazing group? Like, I think the focused work we've done over the last two days has been phenomenal. I think we've come up with an incredible list of priorities that can really make a difference in our community. And I'm just very, very much looking forward to working on this, this set with, with the eight of you. So thanks so much for that. And then also just a huge, huge thank you to our incredibly capable staff who have spent yesterday and today of their weekend working through this tough process and just so grateful for all of you and thank you for your collaboration, your partnership.
Excellent. Thanks, Erin. All right, Rachel, can I come to you next?
Well, sure. I thank you, Heather, for all your work over the last few months and Bob Yates for being a partner on the retreat committee. I think that you know, as far as these things go, it was as good as we could hope for. And Nuri and staff, I know that there was a lot of overdrive work and colleagues last 48 hours. So thanks to everyone for digging deep and, and getting us to a place where we, I think, can have a really good future two years. Let's go. We can do it.
Great, thanks, Rachel. Tara? You're thinking thumbs up, fantastic. Lauren, any final thoughts for the crowd here tonight, today? It's not nighttime yet, Heather. All the thumbs up, fantastic. Mark, how about from you?
Yeah, I also want to thank the retreat committee, Rachel and Bob. I want to thank Mayor Brockett and Heather, thank you for all the work you've put in. And of course, staff, as always, has borne up with us nobly and, and thank you for all the help. And I want to thank my colleagues. You know, we've selected certain things that, that appeal to some, you know, there'll be certain disappointments, but by and large, we've come to a very reasonable conclusion and have a good agenda for the next couple of years. So that's, that's what I got.
Thanks, Mark. Nicole?
As always, I have a lot of words. I'm just going to point to, I'm working on summarizing all my thoughts and feelings for, I guess, opinion, hopefully in the Boulder beat coming out in a couple of days. So look, look, look for more there. I just want to extend gratitude to everybody who has been a part of this process. To staff, to my fellow council members, to you, Heather, and your team, as well as to all the community members who've been so engaged and helping to provide us, you know, with information, with cool slides and PowerPoints and all that. I think for me, this, this list really represents the best of what our community is capable of when we come together and really work with each other and commit to that. And I'm just excited about all this progress we're going to be making. So thank you to everybody.
Lovely. Thanks, Nicole. Junie?
I just want to say thank you. I ditto everything that's been said by Nicole, Erin. It's been, it's been, it's been a learning process, learning from all of you fellow council members in the community as well. So thank you for a great retreat and I look forward to, you know, next year.
Thanks, Junie. And Matt?
Oh, well, thank you. Usually with a name like Benjamin, I go first. This is quite a refreshing thing. I, you know, Heather, I want to thank you. We haven't met and you brought a lot of great life and great sense of humor to this and really brought some enjoyment. I've done facilitation with folks and it's been dry. What you delivered was fantastic. So thank you for a great experience. I also want to thank my colleagues for, for, you know, coalescing around these things and everyone putting in their individual thoughts, aspirations, but also carrying the will of the voters that got you elected and then the community as a whole that we represent. And so thank you for, for reaching to that place as a whole. And a big thanks for staff, you know, after Tuesday, and I said it at the Tuesday meeting, I felt discouraged based on that meeting. The full circle evolution to now is quite different. And so I want to just give everybody a big credit that my discouragement on Tuesday is now filled with a lot of encouragement and gratitude and confidence that we're going to be able to reach these goals. And really, lastly, that this is just a testament to our ability to invest in our values. And hopefully this list is a sign of that to the community at large and to staff and everyone else that this is how we invest in our values to build a community that we all can thrive in going forward.
Thanks, Matt. And Nuriya, how about for you?
Well, first, Heather, you rock. Let me just say that, right? Like, you're just awesome and really appreciate this. My first time in this council retreat, working with you, and you're just a rock star. Matt, I just wanted to thank you so much, right? When we heard discouragement at Tuesday, we ourselves were discouraged because we know this is a messy process and know that the first iterations of what's to come can get us in that space. But I hope you have seen, all of council has seen how incredible your City of Boulder staff team is. They are thoughtful. They are wanting to be candid with you. They are wanting to explore with you a little bit of what you're really trying to solve so that we can get to solutions together. They are wanting to be innovative and creative and serve our community. So I am so glad that we knew we would get to this place eventually and so glad that you all have acknowledged that we've gotten to that place. And then council, I just wanted to thank you too, that this is, as I look at those top 10 sort of list right now, it is so focused on our values. It is so focused on people. And as someone who has come to public service based on how we serve our community, it shines as we, as we see those lists as you coming forward. So just, I appreciate how hard it is to narrow your priority items and want to just lift up for everyone that these are not the only items we'll ever be working on and the ones that we have not and put in the parking lot are no less important. We just need to, we, we won't do anything if we do all things, right? So this is our way to move forward and to make sure that we're at least identifying the initial start of some great work we're going to do in community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Nuriya. Nuriya, staff and council, it's not lost on me that you put a lot of confidence and trust in me when you invite me to be part of your retreat events. And thank you so much. It means a lot to me. It truly is a joy and a pleasure to work with you and I've enjoyed it. Keep an eye out for a summary coming from Samuel, given that we've been together for a couple of days. That'll probably be a minute. And I look forward to seeing all the wonderful things that you will do based on the conversations you've had during this retreat cycle. And be safe and be well, be well and continue to do the great things that you do for your community. And Erin, unless you need to do something else, I'd be inclined to let these people go home on Saturday.
Well, just a final thank you to you, Heather, for your extraordinary facilitation work. We couldn't do without you. And now onward to the next two years.
Fantastic. Council, staff, it's Saturday. It's a beautiful day in Colorado. Get out there and enjoy it. We're adjourned.